Foreign Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capital District shall come to order for the purposes of hearing Bill 312-33 introduced by Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. And it's an act to repeal and reenact 3105 of Article One, Chapter Three of Title Twenty-Two, GCA, relative to responsibly raising the minimum wage. I have just an announcement that in accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders, five days in advance on May tenth, two thousand and sixteen, and a second notice was sent on May thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. I first like to recognize and thank the Vice Chair of this committee, Senator Tom Attah, for being here, of course, Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz, and to his right is Senator Michael Snitlis. Good evening. And then to my left is Senator Tony Attah, the minority leader, Senator Frank Uggan Jr., Senator Mary Torres, good evening, and Senator Tommy Morrison. We've convened this hearing to discuss Bill 312-33, and I do have several individuals who signed up, and we will continue to go ahead and add those interested to provide testimony tonight. And so I'd like to recognize the sponsor of the bill, Vice Speaker Cruz, to give an opening statement, and I also understand that he has a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Hafdi, first I want to begin by thanking you, Mr. Chairman, for agreeing to hear Bill 312, my proposal to incrementally raise Guam's minimum hourly wage to ten-ten an hour by January the first, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Chairman, to explain why we are here today, it is imperative that we understand the bipartisan minimum wage compromise that you were so instrumental in crafting two years ago. In exchange for unanimous support for a single-dollar increase to Guam's hourly minimum wage, which went into effect on January the first, two thousand and fifteen, I agreed to the removal of the remaining two automatic increases originally proposed by Bill 316. Under my original proposal, these two annual ninety-five-cent increments would have taken effect January the first, two thousand and sixteen, and January the first, two thousand and seventeen, respectively, requiring no further legislative action. The logic behind these automatic ninety-five-cent increases per year was simple: first, give the economy time to adjust, and second, remove the risk of subjecting further increases to partisan political debate in an election year. That's the reason why we are here today. At the urging of business leaders and the other community stakeholders, the 2014 compromise had a second leg, a second measure that required an independent economic assessment of the 2015 increase, which raised Guam's hourly minimum wage from seven-twenty-five to its current eight-twenty-five. To be clear, I agreed that the independent EIS on the 2015 minimum wage was important, which is why I supported the measure that mandated it, and why I filed a Freedom of Information Act request on January the eighth of this year to both the Guam Economic Development Administration and the Guam Department of Labor to determine the study's progress. Yet here we are, with thousands of minimum-wage workers still waiting for an EIS, which should have been completed and published by April thirtieth, but wasn't even procured as of April the twentieth, and I just got word, it still hasn't been procured as of today, the eighteenth of May. This truth is perhaps the most ironic of all. Those who opposed my original proposal in 2014 had asked for an economic impact statement release date of 2016, and now say that we are only discussing a minimum wage increase because it's "election-year politics." What they did not say is that the "election-year politics" is exactly what my 2014 bill attempted to avoid. The original measure would have increased the minimum wage to ten-ten an hour automatically, ninety-five cents a year, with no further need for politics, a fact we can't forget just because some people are uncomfortable with the truth. If an administration which publicly opposed our ten-ten proposal in 2014 can now end minimum wage increases simply by failing to act as the law requires, how long should our working poor wait? If all it takes to kill a minimum wage increase is a study that never comes, why would any study come at all? Minimum Wage Myths. Not too long ago, Mr. Chairman, we found ourselves in a very similar hearing during which many reasonable people disagreed on this very contentious topic. Central to their concern was the belief that the national studies had no relevance on Guam. Their premise was that Guam needed its own data. Despite a mountain of economic evidence which held that a measured increase in the minimum wage would not cripple the economy, but rather strengthen the economic circumstances of the working poor, we acquiesced because this was an important issue that deserved our best effort. Clearly, others did not take that concern seriously. While the executive branch has yet to even procure...
For the record, your staff did that, Mr. ...
I know.
Mr. Vice Speaker, not mine.
I still haven't finished.
But he needs the light.
While the executive branch has yet to even procure the professional services needed to conduct the independent EIS, we do have clear and convincing economic data by which we can judge the impacts of the 2015 minimum wage increase and perhaps test the most commonly held objections to the minimum wage increase. Number one, increasing the minimum wage will cause massive job layoffs. You can go ahead, but leave the light on.
Leave the light on.
Leave the light on and just run the ...
Yeah, run the PowerPoint.
Because otherwise, I can't read. According to the latest employment data published by the Guam Department of Labor, Guam's economy witnessed over twelve-hundred new jobs, twelve-hundred new jobs, since the minimum wage increase went into effect. That doesn't mean that some parts of our economy didn't see a period of adjustment or that every industry is thriving. It simply means that the minimum wage increased, and whether there is a correlation or not, more people on Guam are not working less. Myth number two, raising the minimum wage will drastically reduce the number of hours worked. According to the same employment data, the private sector did not see a drastic reduction in the total number of hours worked; instead, the number stayed statistically flat while average weekly earnings rose. Moreover, in the service industry where massive reductions of hours worked were predicted, the Department of Labor's data indicates a slight one-hour decline while weekly earnings compared to the same period in the previous year increased. Put simply, while individuals worked one hour less, their average weekly income increased. Myth number three, increasing the minimum wage will raise the cost of basic consumer goods. According to the Consumer Price Index first quarter 2016, published by the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, the inflation rate for food, housing, and gas declined in 2015 compared to the period before the wage increase occurred. Myth number four, increasing the minimum wage won't help taxpayers. When employers don't pay the people who work for them a sufficient wage, taxpayers pick up the tab. According to the Office of Public Accountability, we pay fifty-six million dollars a year in earned income tax credits to underpaid employees, many of whom are in the private sector. Number five, raising the minimum wage won't lift anyone out of poverty. Since the 2015 wage increase, Guam has witnessed a decline in welfare enrollment, a decline that public health officials have attributed to an increased wage among the working poor. Myth number six, minimum wage only affects the unskilled. While another assertion commonly used to oppose minimum wage increases is to argue that education is the magic bullet, that a degree will automatically guarantee high wages and better job security, while I agree with the assertion that the facts as they appear have forced me to test my own deeply-held beliefs. According to the latest population census, in the individuals of Guam's workforce who held a bachelor's degree or that completed at least one training program, twenty percent earned less than fifteen thousand, forty percent earned less than twenty-five thousand, and fifty-six percent earned less than fifty-three thousand, five hundred. Myth number seven, raising the minimum wage will directly harm our tourism industry, hindering our economy and hurting our competitiveness. Again, per G.R.H.R.A.'s summary of statistical report from December 2015, arithmetic closely challenges that assertion. Total room rates, I'm sorry, total room sales revenue in 2015 was two-hundred-and-forty-nine million, demonstrating a seventeen-million-dollar increase when compared with 2014. When compared to 2013, total room sales revenues increased by fifty-one million. Total room nights sold over the same period increased by forty-seven thousand room nights. Total number of jobs in this sector alone grew by five-hundred-and-twenty positions between 2014 and 2015. Mr. Chairman, I can see that the evidence clearly contradicts some of the most deeply held beliefs about the minimum wage, but the evidence clearly speaks clearly, and I can't ignore it. Finally, I admit that reasonable people may consider tailoring this new proposal to the outcome we wish to achieve. One suggestion was a small-business exemption. Quote-unquote "mom-and-pop shops" with fewer than five employees may seek an exemption from at least one of these annual increases. I believe that this proposal is reasonable, and I ask you, Mr. Chairman of this committee, to give this proposal some consideration. I understand there's also some talk, I had some visitors yesterday, about a tip credit. Moreover, the state of Hawaii, an island whose economy is also tourism-based, may prove to be an instructive example. Under the ten-ten minimum wage law, Hawaii's employers may receive a "tipped worker credit", allowing them to include a portion of that worker's tips in minimum wage calculations, provided those tips significantly exceed the statutory minimum wage. Mr. Chairman, while I am willing to consider a reasonable amendment to achieve our goal so that no person who works a full-time job lives in poverty, what I will not condone is allowing thousands of Guam's working poor to wait for a study that may never come. Our body cannot allow delay to equal denial. To do so would ignore right as well as reality. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Speaker. We're gonna go ahead and begin with those individuals who signed up to testify, and I'll call the individuals in the order to which they signed. I want to begin by inviting up here Attorney John Bell, Mr. John Song, Joe Roberto, Jerry Okay, we'll treat this as the first panel. Okay, before I call on Attorney Bell to provide his testimony, I'm being asked by Senator Tony Attah if he could enter into the record Governor Cavill's written testimony, so I'll go ahead and dispose of that now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to read the governor's testimony, and for the record, Honorable Rory J. Respecho, Chairman, Committee, and Rose. Dear Mr. Chairman and senators, I have no doubt the minimum wage is too low. It is probably time for an increase, however, that's simply my personal opinion. It is neither based on evidence nor academic findings. I asked for public input on the possibility of a minimum wage increase a few months ago. The input varied. Small-business owners, while they admitted to the positive benefits of the last increase to the families of those wage earners, warned me that another substantial increase could put their shops out of business. Low-wage earners generally support an increase. And then there's the anecdotal evidence. The pace of economic growth since the last increase cannot be ignored, neither can the first decline in welfare usage in years. Alas, we as leaders cannot simply rely on our personal opinions, anecdotal evidence, or barometers of intuition. It is critical we base our decisions on fact. I do not want to mess with the promising growth of our economy by injecting policy that sends us back into recession. As the governor, I want to see the evidence and research of this far-reaching policy's effect before signing such a measure into law. The Department of Labor has been trying to find a funding solution to conduct a study the legislature mandated regarding the minimum wage increase. They need a funding solution because, again, the legislature mandated something without any funding to back it up. The author cannot blame the Department of Labor for a study he told them to do without the wherewithal to do it. If he is serious about this matter, he will identify the funds needed, appropriate it, and wait for the study before proceeding. This is the responsible thing to do. Guam's workers and employers, at the very least, deserve that from their legislature. In a nutshell, I'm for it, but I need to see proof first. I'll likely veto a half-baked policy with ramifications as large as this. Senators, please ensure your vote is backed by your due diligence to find the truth and not simply a parking space on the gameboard of politics. Sincerely, Eddie Bosa-Cavill, Governor.
Okay. I'd also like to recognize Senator James Hoadon, and thank him for being here this evening. Okay, Attorney Bell will begin with you, since you were the first to sign up.
Testing, testing. Thank you, senators, for the opportunity to voice my support very much in favor of Bill 312-33 to raise Guam's minimum wage. I'll apologize in advance if I have to run at some point during this hearing, only because I did have a prior commitment. As a full-time attorney and a part-time volunteer for some local nonprofits, I just want to make sure that it's clear that while I wear many hats, I am speaking strictly on my own behalf and humbly offer my own perspective. I grew up very poor, and I know what it's like to go hungry. If it weren't for free lunch programs at school, I simply would have not eaten during certain parts of my childhood. But eventually, our dad took us in and taught us to study hard and work even harder. All through high school, I washed dishes and I bust tables. Took me twelve years to finish college because, among countless other jobs that I had through the years, I was also a waiter, a security guard, a pest-control technician, and I eventually joined the Navy as an enlisted sailor. I also became a husband and a father of two beautiful girls, and through it all, I've scrubbed more toilets and mopped more floors than anyone will ever know. Thanks to the G.I. Bill and a ton of student loans, I was able to finish my undergraduate degree. I'm a philosophy major, not because of the big bucks, obviously, but because I fell in love with the search for truth and meaning in life. While I am no economist, in my senior year at San Diego State in 2008, I presented a paper advocating for the ethical egoism position of Spinoza, philosopher not many people have heard about, and his point is that supporting economic policies which favor the struggling many over the wealthy few was not just the morally right thing to do, but actually, as a pragmatic issue, actually in the best self-interest of all people, whatever their income bracket. I put my heart and soul into that paper, and I researched it profusely to make sure that I had factual support based on sound economic research. I am now an attorney, and if I'm being honest, it's only because my philosophy professors told me to get a real job where I could actually feed my wife and kids and keep paying my bills. So they suggested law school. I got a half-price scholarship, worked my tail off, and graduated early. Here I am, two-hundred-thousand dollars in student loans later, a labor and employment attorney. Has it all been worth it? Ask me in twenty to forty years when I'm done paying my student loans. Can I buy a modest home? Not anytime soon. Can I put my own kids through college? Not a chance. They're going to have to get scholarships to join the military, just like I had to do. Why? Because poverty perpetuates poverty, and wealth perpetuates wealth. The vast majority of poor people are poor despite their willingness to work hard because our economic system exploits cheap labor wherever it can. I am not here to tell you that hard work is not worth it. I am simply here to remind everyone that hard work is necessary, at least for our working families, but it's not sufficient to get ahead. The game is rigged against the many, and the deck is stacked against the poor. If I were left purely to the free market, slavery would still be around, and some single mothers would still have to give in to their bosses' sexual advances if they wanted to feed their children at home. And I can tell you firsthand that the notion that minimum wage is only paid for entry-level positions for kids right out of high school is a myth. It is propaganda and nothing more. Thankfully, we live in a society that, while imperfect, is capable of making great strides towards socioeconomic justice. As a general matter, we don't enact labor laws because they're convenient or will make businesses more profitable or because this or that organization supports them. We enact labor laws because of the moral realization that without them, working families would be exploited by an amoral system which demands paying people as little as you can legally get away with. As it happens, through even more borrowing, I myself am now a small-business owner of my solo firm, and I can tell you firsthand how truly tough it is to survive without a steady paycheck, especially those first couple of years. If I were thinking purely selfishly, I would not be in support of the bill. I now have four of my own employees, and one of them is coming off probation and due for hoorays. This bill might hurt me a little bit in the short term, but you know what? So be it. Because at the end of the day, if I can't earn an honest living by working hard and doing the right things and instead have to make a profit by exploiting my employees who are trying to feed their own families, then I have no business running a business. But my business won't fail. I won't let it because I have clients to fight for, a family to feed, and employees who rely on me as well. If I have to work a bit harder to pay them a bit more because the law requires it, so be it. Other people will be paying their employees more, who will have more money to circulate right back into the economy, and at worst, with minimal net effect. More importantly, paying my employees a fair wage to help them feed their families is simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you also. Before I recognize Mr. Song, I'd like to recognize two of our colleagues in the audience, Vice Speaker Ted Nelson and Senator Resini. Thank you for being here tonight. Mr. Song, you're recognized.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your full name into the microphone.
My name is John Song, S-O-N-G, and I am here to provide testimony in opposition to Bill 312-33. My name is John Song. I am a small-business owner, and I'm also a certified farmer. And I am here in opposition to this bill because it will affect not only my small business as a consultant, but also my farming operations, to provide local products to the local community. I would like to read a portion of my written testimony, which will be submitted at a later date. Buenos en la tarde. The desire to provide a means for low-income workers to be able to support themselves and their families is understandable. However, legislating businesses to forcibly increase labor costs is not an appropriate solution. For many businesses, the largest operating expense is labor-related costs. Whether it is salaries and wages, insurance, other benefits, payroll taxes, or unemployment insurance, labor costs are a significant portion of operating expenses. Businesses can respond to higher labor costs in several ways. Companies can reduce benefits, training, or hours. Companies can reduce the wages, hours, or numbers of other workers. Companies can increase prices that customers pay for goods or services, or companies can settle for less profits. Within the context of a proposed increase in the minimum wage, minimum-wage workers are not the only ones affected. Higher-paid workers such as shift leaders, supervisors, assistant managers, and managers may also see a reduction of wages, hours, or benefits, or the outright elimination of the position due to a concept called wage compression. This is especially true if the higher-paid workers feel that they should also receive an increase in wages or the elimination or reduction in the difference in pay makes the position unnecessary. Many small businesses on Guam are traditional "mom-and-pop" operations. Most are staffed by family members or may be organized as owners with manager-employees and line-employees. This typical staffing pattern for newer, smaller businesses established five years or less will have the owner as the manager or supervisor of the employees. Many established businesses over five years will typically see the placement of managers between the small-business owner and the employees. As with many businesses faced with increases in operating costs or decreases in revenues, the typical small business will seek to offset any impact by increasing operational efficiency or decreasing expenses. Small businesses may find that owners are sufficiently capable of taking back the direct supervision of employees and may reduce or eliminate one or more supervisors in that capacity. According to the U.S. Census Bureau's Economic Census Report of 2012, payroll as a percentage of sales revenue was ten to fourteen percent for retail trades, while in the food, service, and accommodation industry, that ratio was much higher, at twenty-six to twenty-nine percent. The most recent data published by the Guam Department of Labor Bureau of Labor Statistics states that of the forty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-three workers in all private-sector occupations, eleven-thousand-three-hundred-forty-seven had wages at or below the minimum wage at the time. During the same period, workers in retail, food service, and accommodation accounted for eleven-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-three of the forty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-three private-sector employees. Even assuming an FTE, or full-time equivalent, of only seventy-five percent, and wage compression rate of one-point-zero for the workers in the retail, food, service, and accommodation industries on Guam affected by the increase in the proposed minimum wage legislation, businesses in the retail industry would have to raise prices five to six percent, while food, service, and accommodations businesses would have to raise prices twelve to fourteen percent, assuming all other expenses and income remain the same, including materials, supply costs, and non-minimum-wage labor expenses. This five-to-fourteen percent increase would be compounded at each level for every good or service being finally reaching the ultimate consumer, resulting in artificial inflation of six to sixteen percent. And this is actually supported by the CPI data that was presented earlier. If you look at a comparison between 2013, 2014, 2015, and 2016, the trend prior to the 2015 increase was modest, under-one-percent increases in CPI, whereas between 2015 and 2016, you have a four-point-six percent increase in the CPI, with the biggest factor in the change for the decreases in food, housing, electricity, being a component by fuel. The cost of fuel expenses during that same period was affected during the same period, first quarter of those years, of those particular years. The oil prices for 2013 was ninety-seven dollars a barrel, 2014 was one-hundred-one dollars a barrel, 2015 was forty-seven dollars a barrel, and 2016 was thirty-six dollars a barrel. If you compare those numbers compared to what the actual CPI shows, it will show that the increase in the CPI should not have occurred, notwithstanding anything else. If your fuel costs for people who live on Guam, where fuel still remains, I believe it's anywhere from a dollar to a dollar-fifty more expensive per gallon than most mainland consumers spend, we should be spending less, yet we're spending more. While the economic impact on the business and its owners is significant, there's another effect of this loss in profit for businesses. Decreased local tax revenue would see the secondary impact of the changing business environment. As business operational expenses increase, total net profits for a small business or any business decrease. Therefore, the tax revenue that they would be liable for would also decrease. Given Guam's current economic climate, another increased minimum wage is not appropriate without a greater understanding of the broader effects such an increase would have. For employers, it would mean increased costs to do business. For the local government, it would mean decreased revenues. For the consumer, it would mean increased prices. Just to give a real-world example of what this means on a day-to-day basis, my brother-in-law owns a market. He has one employee. He runs the operation by himself from 5:00 a.m. till 11:00 p.m. He's there all day. His wife works a different job, so he's the supervisor, he's the manager, and he has one employee. The retail price of one pickled egg went from fifty cents to seventy-five cents because the wholesale price of eggs for... of eggs for him went up by 95% during the same period. Now, if that isn't inflation, I don't know what is. To further underscore the effect this will have on a wider basis, the impact of an increase in the minimum wage can be quantified in terms of increased labor costs in excess of $429 million over the period of this proposed legislation. Of that amount, at least $38 million would be taken directly out of Guam's economy in terms of payroll taxes, social security, and Medicare taxes that do not stay on this island. They have to be sent to the federal government. For those individuals who are self-employed, this will also have an effect in that if they have to increase their expenses for their supplies, for their equipment, they have increased costs that they also have to pay for when they send their individual self-employment taxes off-island. As a net effect in terms of payroll taxes, taking out almost $40 million from the local economy to send back to Uncle Sam, I think is inappropriate at this time. The other effect is that it will increase government-of-Guam expenditures because this law does not have an exemption for government employees. Therefore, any employees currently earning less than the proposed increases would see an automatic increase in their paychecks, and therefore the payroll expenses for the government of Guam and operating expenses would therefore increase. Given the government of Guam's precarious financial situation, I feel that at this stage, this legislation should be opposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your participation. Can you please make sure that we have a copy of your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Song. Mr. Joe Roberto.
Hafede, Senators, thank you very much for this opportunity today. I would just like to be as calm and, you know, as normal as possible, and it's pretty cold in here. The air con's up pretty high. But I'd just like to say that there's been so much read and said about this subject, excellent articles I've seen, a lot of theories out there of what may occur depending on this law. Now, this is just based on my company alone, and that's all I have to offer. I didn't do any research on the entire island, what it will do, what it will not do, and I strongly appreciate the Senators' thinking about the people and what they ought to be making. At the same time, the attorney here, that's a beautiful story, because I too, you know, we come from, back in the day, come from a very large families, and I come from a family of 11, and grew up on a farm. And to say we weren't poor, I don't want to say we were poor, we just didn't have much, but we lived happy lives. And part of the priority before school was going to a farm. So your dad, after school, your priorities go to the farm, make sure pigs are fed, make sure the water, weeds are powed, rocks are taken, all of that good stuff. And today, me and my brother own a sort of successful business, striving and thriving, and doing what we can to support many families. And this is my story. This letter is to address how a small company and a small staff would once again be negatively affected if this minimum wage law were to become law. This letter is fact, it is not fiction. Many years ago, my brother and I made a firm commitment to take care of our staff and their families by way of annual bonuses, increases, medical and dental insurance, vacation with pay, holiday with pay, profit sharing, retirement contributions, and most recently, just a few months ago, we added life insurance. This is besides their hourly wage, all of those benefits. Additionally, we've taken several of our employees off-island for more training, educational sessions, and continue to invest in our employees' development. We truly believe the company's success is a direct reflection of employees' success as our staff is truly our most valued assets. However, benefits and further investment into employee knowledge and education will surely and negatively be affected if another increase of the minimum wage were to occur. How? Both the company's disposable income and employees' disposable income will be minimized once again to where our decisions to spend money will be prioritized to basic necessities. Do we really need to pay for employees' life insurance? Do we really need to provide profit sharing? Do we really need to contribute to their retirement? We already pay into social security. Do we really need to pay for medical and dental insurance? We are a small company that truly cares for our employees by giving what little profits we make. Our employees' benefits come from disposable income, and if the law passes, will indirectly and negatively affect our disposable income. Some time ago, I was asked to speak in front of this legislature and share how our company would negatively be affected. It was introduced, the minimum wage, but after giving somewhat of an emotional speech, it fell on deaf ears. In 2015, one of our locations ended with a negative number. This was anticipated and was somewhat said during my speech. This location employs up to three people, and most of all, and most of all our employees have families. Thankfully, we have one other location which did well and covered the other location's costs and expenses. I've already mentioned to my brother, Tom, to relieve his stress and simply shut it down. This letter mentions mostly of our employees, but not what our small company already provides to the community. We continue to give what we can. However, this kindness and generosity will certainly be affected negatively, and sadly, time and money is all we can provide, and we do our very best, all that we can. Why? Because, like the attorney once was, we were there. We know how it feels not to make. It literally is a choice. Really, that's the bottom line. So if we choose to succeed, like he chose to go to school, work hard, stick to those books, graduate early, everyone, everyone here on this island has the same opportunities as me and my brother, as these people behind me, as our dear Senators, you all. I applaud you guys for thinking of our people truly and sincerely. Thank you very much.
Thank you also. Please make sure we have a copy of your testimony. Mr. Paulino.
I'd like to thank the Senators for giving me this opportunity to speak on behalf of a lot of my clients that I work with. I have written testimony, and I'd like to go ahead and read it. Hello and good evening to you Senators and to my fellow residents of Guam. My name is Jerry Paulino. I present myself before you as a local businessman, fortunate enough to own and operate a handful of small businesses in Guam, the smallest of which employs three people, the largest 35. I have come before you to present my testimony as it relates to Bill 312-33 core, a bill intended to responsibly raise the minimum wage. My testimony focuses on the effects that wage increases have had and will have on small businesses, which make up the soul of the thriving economy. One of the businesses I operate offers bookkeeping, payroll, and tax services to the island community. Through the years, I have serviced more than 700 clients in Guam, both personal and corporate, and many of whom are still current customers. From firsthand experience, it is evident that there is a downward trend of homegrown entrepreneurs within the island, and it is largely due to the ever-increasing cost of entering the marketplace. We have seen increased regulations on businesses, increases to the cost of goods, and a growing negative public sentiment against businesses in general fueled by various local interest groups. Bundle these issues with an increased minimum wage, and it isn't hard to see the perfect storm that is on the horizon. Before long, we may see some business communities where the only new business started would be those backed by large corporations or foreign investments. There is a misconception by the general public that all business owners are well-to-do, retaining a large portion of their generated revenue as profits. The reality is that most small business owners wrestle with cash flow issues daily, struggling to make ends meet. We have to navigate a minefield of account collections, payroll, vendor payments, and tax obligations. Even after factoring out wage increases, most business owners struggle with the realization that it only takes a few down months for them to go out of business. Roughly two years ago, the minimum hourly wage was increased from $7.25 to $8.25. Based on the information I've gathered, it shows that business owners have dealt with this change by reducing employee hours, increasing owner or salary employee's responsibilities, downsizing the workforce, or increasing prices. Now that none of these business owners saw hiring additional workers as a way to combat the change. The first two remedies, reducing employee hours and increasing employee responsibilities, are intertwined. In an effort to keep prices competitive, owners have been forced to reduce the hours worked by employees on an hourly wage and transfer the responsibilities to themselves or other fixed costs or salaried employees. Our information also shows that the total number of hours worked by small business owners increased roughly 30%. The increased hours spent on work means they have spent less time on their personal life, placing an added soft cost of price of doing business. In situations where it is not enough to compensate for the increased wages, owners have had to lay off employees or increase prices, both of which works against the spirit of the bill intended to create. The bill aims to help the working class improve their standard of living. However, it is doing so at the expense of the small business owner. Unlike employees who leave their work at the end of the day, small business owners continue to work on new ideas and innovations to maintain a competitive edge. The work is never done for a small business owner. If considering all hours spent on auxiliary activities surrounding a typical small business, the owner's hourly wage can easily fall below $5. Small business owners work with tighter budgets and smaller margins. Any outward adjustment on costs have tremendously impact on, tremendous impact on a company's bottom line, especially in service-related industries where margins are already minimized to stay competitive. As a result, there is very little capital to, there is very little capital to venture into new markets or to reinvest into their company, both of which can potentially boost the economy. The affected are not solely small business owners, large employers, and employed and retired, we feel, is too. Consider the employee who starts a minimum wage. He or she is motivated to earn an increased wage. Through their hard work, they are able to improve their skill set, increase their responsibilities, and thus realize an increased wage within their company. The employee is better off due to their added skills, and the company is better off due to the more competitive, competent workforce. If the minimum wage is artificially increased to $10, $10.10, or $15 an hour, it will remove the motivation to improve. Without that motivation, it is likely that Guam's future workforce will be flooded with overpaid and undereducated workers. Now, consider the same employee who hourly wage is $2 above the minimum after putting the significant time and effort into their job. This would be equivalent to a 25% increase if they started at the current minimum wage. If a new employee is hired at the new minimum wage at $10.10 per hour, the business owner is faced with a predicament. Should increases to the minimum wage propagate the increases to all employees or just a few hires? This could have significantly impacted business, both big and small, to not only their financial side, but to their employees' morale as well. How is a business owner able to justify paying a high school dropout the same amount as an employee who worked several years for their pay? Lastly, consider those individuals who have put their time and energy and are now retired on a fixed income. A significant portion of our clients are retired, and they have a pessimistic outlook of the future. Their savings plan was based on certain calculated standard of living. Increasing the minimum wage would lead to increased prices, one way or another. Either the increase in the cost of goods will force the owner to pass the cost off to the customer, or there will be an increase demanded for products. In both cases, their purchasing power has diminished. The retirees are sometimes faced with deciding whether to pay their utility bill or purchase life-saving medication. Please keep in mind a large number of employees who are earning a minimum wage are still young and have potential for higher earnings when compared to retirees who may be too old to work or unable to work because of their health condition. What I have presented here today is based on real people struggling with real problems. It is based on firsthand accounts, not surveys or gut feeling. It is their hope, in my own and my own, that my testimony today does not fall in deaf ears. I hope that this testimony sheds some light on the difficulties and burdens small business owners endure every day. I urge each and every one of you Senators to look at the effects the bill will have on the community as a whole, and not just the few in the workforce. I ask that you take closer look at someone you know that is a small business owner, someone that is living on a fixed income, or someone who will lose their job as a result of your decision. Once we lose the will, the courage, and the drive to succeed, we will have lost the main force that makes Guam a great place to live. Keep the Guamanian dream going and encourage local ownership. We must make it possible for future generations to know what it means to buy local. Thank you very much.
Thank you also. Mr. Paulino, I also don't have a copy of your testimony, so if I could make sure we... I only have the copy of a testimony from Attorney Bell. Before I dismiss this panel, I'd like to invite any Senator, if they would have any follow-up questions or not. Thank you for your participation this evening. Feel free to stick around in case there's some questions that come up. I'd like to invite Rose Morales, Elizabeth Vegas, Laura Duckanay, Henry Heradura, and Henry Duckanay.
I'm representing Henry and Henry.
Okay, so that means we have two more seats available. Mr. Joe Bradley.
I was just gonna submit my written testimony, I wasn't gonna speak.
Okay, well, acknowledge that testimony then, for the record. Okay, we have one more seat available for Catherine Castro.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, my mom asked me to talk. Okay, there. Can you hear me now?
Okay, as long as you disclose that your mom asked you to speak on your behalf, because I was gonna recognize your mom first.
Okay.
But go ahead.
She wants to say something first.
Okay, perfect. Ma'am? Pull the microphone close to her.
My name is Elizabeth Grace Sablon-Viegas. And I, Senator Cruz, shame on you. My daughter's gonna speak because I lose my voice.
Dear Senator Ruspisho, as a retiring manamko, I would like to tell Vice Speaker Cruz, shame on you for using your office and authority as an elected leader to introduce such detrimental legislation for people who, like me, have no opportunity to receive an increase in my monthly income, yet have to pay for the consequences of the increased cost of living. And yet, all of you who were re-elected two years ago supported a substantial pay increase to each of you... to each of you personally, at the detriment to all the taxpayers who have to contribute to cover the additional cost. What you should be focusing on is how can we better educate and train our young people, and those stuck in minimum wage jobs, to enable them to earn higher pay, focus on developing the skills of our workforce. Your job is not to propose and pass unfunded government mandates, but to truly be interested and concerned in providing better pay for better skills and funding the programs that do that. What you're doing is supporting the entitlement mentality with having, without having to earn better pay for having better skills. But that may be your very own mentality, since you are using this, this as another political ploy to fund your reelection campaign, which, by the way, you funded it two years ago with the same thing. Remember that most big businesses can and do pay higher than minimum wage, but many of the small business owners are struggling to make ends meet. Remember the manamko, and the retirees too. I will definitely remember all of you who support this bill on election day, and remember not to vote for you. A government of Guam retiree survivor.
Okay, you may continue.
Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Laura Dackenai, and I'm the chairwoman of the Guam Chamber of Commerce. The Guam Chamber of Commerce represents over 400 businesses with over 40,000 employees. I am also a recent retiree and a part-owner of a small rental retail business. I am speaking partially on behalf of the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and mainly for the many retirees and all small businesses, business owners who will be greatly impacted by Bill 312-33, the proposed legislation to fund Vice Speaker Cruz's reelection campaign. As the chamber, our position has been and continues to be that an independent economic impact study must be done before any further adjustments are proposed. We surveyed our membership and received about a 20 percent response rate. Almost half of the respondents, 47 percent, indicated that they did not employ anyone earning minimum wage. 51.3 percent of the respondents were negatively impacted by the last increase in minimum wage. 43.4 percent of the respondents increased their prices or fees as a result, and many who did not increase prices or fees indicated that they were unable to because they were locked into contracts or the rates that they can charge are regulated. Thirty-eight, one, 38.1 percent of the respondents experienced a decline in sales, and 44.1 percent of the respondents were not able to reinvest back into their business. Many voiced the concern on the lack of an economic impact study, and additional concerns on how further mandated wage increases would affect their business. As a small business owner, I can tell you how the last increase in minimum wage affected my husbands and my small business. We employed 10 employees before the last wage increase took effect, and not all were at minimum wage, but many were close to or above the proposed increase to $8.25. We ended up with seven employees, keeping the more skilled and higher-paid workers with the intention of increasing their hours since no one worked a full 40-hour work week at that time. We needed to increase costs to support the additional hours at higher wages. The end result was there were three fewer jobs. Because things were not as great in the economy as Vice Speaker Cruz would like us to believe, sales for our company were not as good in 2015 as they were in 2015, in 2014, and our guys ended up working less hours. With lower sales, we also did not reinvest into our business with additional equipment, only replacing inventory that was sold in the store, but not replacing worn rental equipment. Our business cannot sustain itself if rental equipment is not replaced, and additional employees may lose their job, or worse, we may have to close. There are many small business owners like ours that are members of the Guam Chamber who are afraid to speak out against the legislation publicly. Why? For fear of what the community may think. I spoke to one restaurant owner who has been impacted and will again be impacted, not because all the employees are at minimum wage, but in the foodservice industry, that is the entry level for unskilled labor in many positions. Am I taking too long? Okay. The fear is that there would be patrons who may also be in lower-income categories that may choose not to patronize the business if the owner speaks out publicly. This is the same for many other restaurants, small mom-and-pop stores, and other small business owners. We're all local. The one thing is for certain, we are all hard-working individuals who are all making an honest living, contributing to the economy, supporting charitable causes, paying our taxes, and still, many are also struggling to make ends meet. Please don't make small business out to be the bad guys. Many of the big businesses can absorb these wage increases, with many of their workforce being already paid well above the minimum wage. And there are also those who do not have any minimum wage employees, but small business owners take a much harder hit. We are not the royalty that some individuals may perceive the small business owners to be. We are all just hard-working individuals who have more at stake than just a job. For some of us, it is our livelihood, and for many of us, it's their entire life savings. It is not that we do not understand that those, what those that are making minimum wage or struggling to survive are going through. We have, all have our stories to tell of how we started, and I've heard many of them over my career, of people who started at the bottom and worked on, worked their way up. No silver spoons, just hard work and determination. After I graduated from high school, I also worked two low-paying jobs, as a cashier and a front desk clerk at a hotel, to put myself through college, and I continued college when I entered into my banking career at an entry-level job. Early in my banking career, some 37 years ago, I also became a single parent, struggling to support my young daughter and survive. So I do know what it is like to earn minimum wage, or close to it, and at that time, it was $1.75. And I also know what it's like to be a single parent, working to get ahead and support a family. But almost 30 years after graduating from high school, I am now retired, and I didn't get any freebies either. I educated myself, I worked hard to get ahead and get myself out of minimum wage and low-paying jobs, and my family, we made a lot of sacrifices. I was fortunate to be able to get an education and pay for it, and I was very fortunate to get a lot of on-the-job training. But not everybody is able to afford the education necessary to command higher wages, or able to find the time to learn a new skill to get a better-paying job. I personally think that is what your focus should be, on what you can do as senators to provide funding for programs that develop our workforce, properly fund our schools, and make education and skills a top priority, properly fund our Department of Revenue and Taxation to enable them to go after those who are not paying their taxes, and fund the independent economic study, instead of blaming others for not acting on unfunding mandates, regardless of who proposed the legislation. Current statistics alone are not sufficient to support the increase. What it does not consider is actual events, like I compared our company 2014 and 15 tax returns, and it shows sales are lower, wages paid were lower, depreciation was lower, and yes, three employees lost their jobs. This is a fact and not just an isolated incident to one business. Many small business owners have been impacted, and the true effects of the last wage increase are not fully known. Although there are statistics that Vice Speaker Cruz says support this position, they need to be fully analyzed by an independent economic study. Sure, the Department of Labor reports that there was an increase of 1,220 jobs from December 2014 to December 2015. Two main industries noted were construction, 740 jobs, hotel, 520 jobs. Add that up, that's 1,260 jobs. Where'd 40 jobs go? They're lost somewhere. We all know that Lottie Hotel also came online in 2014 with more employees hired as the rooms were rolled out. The Satani also came out, they said they were gonna hire 350. So was it minimum wage? Let's not forget, the Guam Regional Medical City also opened their doors and indicated they're adding 550 new jobs. And we also know that the construction jobs are mainly skilled labor, not minimum wage, and mainly H2 labor. So was it really minimum wage increases that provided additional jobs, or other factors within the economy that have not been analyzed or considered? The report also stated that construction lost 170 jobs from the prior quarter to current. So you add that to the 40 and the 550 from Guam Regional Medical City, and now we're talking 760 lost jobs. So really, did jobs go up for our minimum wage workers? Compare the hour, average hours worked from December 2014 to December 2015. Only GovGuam, printing, publishing, wholesale, retail, finance, and real estate had slight increases in the number of hours worked. All other industries in the Department of Labor report indicated less average hours worked in their workforce. It was also noted that unemployment dropped from 7.7 in December 2014 to 6.9 in the Bureau of Labor Statistics' March 2015 unemployment report, shortly after the last increase on minimum wage. And employment went down from 5,760 to 4,840, or 920 less unemployed individuals. Was it really because of minimum wage increases? Let me highlight that the report also indicated that the total of jobs for the same period dropped from 69,110 to 65,580, or 3,530 fewer individuals employed. Where did they go? The non-labor category force grew by more than 4,000, from 46,710 to 50,740 over the same period. That means there were 4,000 more people who were in the workforce previously or considered to be unemployed, seeking employment in the workforce, that simply chose to no longer work for whatever reason. The Consumer Price Index for the first quarter did show some drops in areas like food, housing, and energy, but most areas increased. The overall CPI index was up 4.6 percent for the year, and excluding those three areas, it was actually up 10.6. So what does this mean? I don't know, because I don't also think that the proposed legislation's the answer. I'm not an analyst, and neither any of you. So let's not use statistics like a drunken man uses a lamppost for support rather than illumination. This is what our position is, an independent study must be done before any further wage increases are considered.
Okay, I also don't have a copy of that testimony, but I do have your mom's, and I will enter into the record for you, written testimony from Mr.
I'll send, I'll send it in.
Heradura, I have that, and also your husband's testimony.
Okay, do you want me to read them?
It's, it's up to you.
Okay.
But both testimonies are in opposition to the bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I could read it.
It's up to you.
Yeah, okay. Dear Senator Rispio, this is from Henry Heradura. I would like to thank Vice Speaker Cruz for his position on insisting to raise minimum wage further, despite having not received an independent economic study to show the effects of the last minimum wage increase. In fact, he's proposing to repeal the very section of the code that requires an independent study to be done, to be completed before any further economic adjustments are made. It shows me that he has no regard for the community at large, especially the business community, who are the main drivers of our local economy. My small business originally had two employees in addition to my business partner and me. Thanks to his insistence on increased minimum wage two years ago, we now have zero employees. These jobs are now performed by me and my business partner, instead of employing additional workers. Business is struggling, but we cannot afford to accommodate his political reelection campaign, and hope that this will not be your campaign or any other incumbent senators seeking reelection. We still cannot afford to fund Vice Speaker Cruz's current reelection campaign, and will definitely not be supporting him or anybody else who votes in favor of this legislation. We will also remind our former employees that he was the cause of us having to let them go, and hope they also remember on election day. And then, from Henry Dackenai, is I own a small business, equipment rental, it's actually for my husband, so it's pretty much the same thing I said, but it basically...
Okay, so for this one, you're willing to just, we'll just enter this into the record.
Yeah, I might, I'll just read the last paragraph. Vice Speaker Cruz is now proposing additional wage increases. What are you elected leaders trying to do? Put us out of business? I cannot sustain this business if I am not reinvesting into equipment and simply raising my rates and paying higher raises. If I close down, then nine workers will be without a job. He hired an additional two guys. And if it comes to that point, I'm certainly going to make sure they're understanding that it was Vice Speaker Cruz and anyone else who supports this trying to use small business to fund their reelection campaign at my expense, unfortunately, my employees' expense, if I cannot sustain my business going forward if this bill becomes law.
Okay, please stick around, we'll go through the other two, and then we'll see if we have any follow-up questions from any of the senators. Ms. Castro.
Hafidi, Chairman Rispio, and members of the committee. My name is Catherine Castro, and I am the president of the Guam Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to express our opposition to Bill Number 312-33, which seeks to raise the minimum wage to $9.20 per hour beginning January 1st, 2017, and $10.10 per hour beginning January 1st, 2018. We continue to insist that the government of Guam move forward with an independent economic study as mandated by Public Law 32-229, and if necessary, by appropriating funds expeditiously to do so. We believe that the issue has vast repercussions that may adversely affect many small businesses, as well as the wage earners the bill is trying to support. The lack of adequate data to support the minimum wage increase, coupled with the emotional pressures of an election season, should not dictate the decision of the fate of the bill. Our organization represents over 400 businesses, which employ over 40,000 employees on Guam, and it is our responsibility to advocate for good, sound public policy when it comes to issues that not only unfavorably impact the operating expenses of our members, but also affects investor confidence and creating a business-friendly environment for Guam. Our members are proud community partners who worked collaboratively with government officials over the years in helping to build the state of the island we have today. These are businesses, these are business entities that have taken care of their employees and believe that the market should determine wage levels, not government-imposed mandates. The chamber maintains that the minimum wage is not meant to be a living wage. The minimum wage is a starting point for unskilled workers to gain the skills and experience to earn higher compensation. Increasing the minimum wage will essentially knock off the lower rung of the career ladder and prevent otherwise sincere, hard-working individuals from entering the labor force where they can acquire these important skills. Unlike the mainland where there is a macroeconomy, there is a sort, a shortage of capital within our local business environment, so we do not have economies of scale. This means businesses must operate on thin margins between revenue and expenses, while at the same time, we are burdened with excessive regulatory costs, increasing utility costs, increased taxes, fees, and healthcare costs to run our businesses. What might seem to be a small wage increase by lawmakers could change the equation towards the negative for businessmen and women. In reality, most businesses don't have many minimum wage workers on the payroll, but we should not confuse that with having no effect. The minimum wage does hurt the prospects of the number of workers it covers, and the wage increases will trickle up to the higher wage scales. The impact of wage compression would undoubtedly occur with the passage of this bill. The issue is not only about increasing payroll expenses by over 4,000 annually per minimum wage-earning employee after 2018, but also affects those mid-level employees who earn $10 to $15 per hour. Because of compression, the motivational benefit for employees who have seniority within a company or organization would be lost if their current salary is consistent or just above the new minimum wage proposed in the legislation. The employer would have to contemplate increasing their wages as well, or consider other means of addressing the issue, such as decreasing hours, or even deciding not to hire the unskilled workers at all. If the issue is to increase the standard of living of our island residents, especially those earning low wages, why not focus our efforts and funding on initiatives that will make a real difference, such as improving the quality of our public education system to reduce the dropout rates and produce more students with skills that are relevant and competitive in today and tomorrow's marketplace? Why not support workforce development and training programs designed to enhance the skill sets and promote workforce-ready citizens? Why not restructure our welfare programs to remove the current disincentives to work or receive wage gains? Why not continue to provide our low-skilled workers the opportunity to acquire relevant job skills necessary to move up the career ladder that can only come from on-the-job training and at wages that make sense to our businesses? training, and at wages that make sense to our businesses and job creators? Though much work needs to be done, these are far better solutions to balance the need for increased economic productivity against the concern of all residents to enhance their standard of living than what this legislation is proposing to do. This also benefits the government, which can leverage this increase in skilled labor as an additional incentive to attract new businesses to Guam. Many questions still need to be addressed from the impact of the last minimum wage increase, the start of 2015. Were employee benefits reduced, and if so, to what degree? Were employee hours reduced? How was the wage compression issue addressed? How many employees lost their jobs because the employers' inability to maintain operating expenses? Did the cost of everyday goods really increase? How did it impact the budget of the government of Guam? These questions are endless, which only further supports the importance of the independent economic study prior to addressing this new legislation. To summarize, we respectfully ask you for your careful consideration of the long-term consequences this legislation, if passed into law, will have on our economic competitiveness and job creation effectiveness. We urge you to oppose Bill Number 312-33. Thank you for the opportunity to address this bill.
Okay, thank you also, Mr. Bradley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Joe Bradley. I am neither testifying in favor of, nor in opposition to, this legislation. I'm testifying as a professional economist, who's been a member of this community for over 32 years now, and I'm also testifying on my own behalf. My purpose is to provide information, rather than to provide a position, but a lot of what I'm hearing relates to the basic principles of economics, the basic laws of supply and demand. You throw in a price floor above the equilibrium price, an increase in the supply of whatever shows up, and a decrease in the demand, or the quantity demanded for that, creates a wedge between supply and demand, thus creating unemployment in the labor markets. At the same time, you drive up the price of labor, you drive up the costs of business, and as a consequence, generally, businesses will react by raising their prices to recover those increase in costs. In fact, historically, businesses tend to increase their prices by more than enough to recover those increases in costs. But one way or another, the implication of these two points is that having a minimum wage at all, let alone increasing the minimum wage, is bad public policy. It creates unemployment, it creates inflation. We don't, any of us, want any of that to occur. Basic principles of economics. The real world is quite a bit more complicated than what we learn in Econ 201 and 202. The real world has a lot of variables involved in it, a lot of feedback loops among the variables, the complexities are almost unlimited, and so, looking at the economy from a theoretical standpoint begs the issue as to why the economy does not behave that way in the real world. Fortunately, we have a real economy, we have real data, we have real analyses that have been done. They've been done not so much by me, but by professionals in academia and in government over the last 40, 50, 60 years, and the conclusions generally come to the point that, I'm sorry, raising the minimum wage really doesn't increase unemployment by very much, and the slight increase is temporary, at best. There are reasons for that, that I'll get to in a moment. Also, because, excuse me, an increment in the minimum wage represents such a very small fraction of total costs of doing business, the increase in prices necessary to cover the increases in costs are also nominal, and in fact, in many cases, not even statistically significant. Now, these are not my studies, these are studies published in refereed journals across the nation, and over the past several decades. Now, I will say that the impacts of increasing the minimum wage, or the impacts of minimum wage at all, are not uniform across the economy, they affect different industries differently. There are a lot of industries that rely upon high-skilled workers, hospitals, for instance, banks, if you will, the government itself, universities, schools, and so forth, but there are a lot of businesses that rely upon low-skilled workers to provide the goods and services that they do to the communities. Among these are retail establishments, restaurants, hotels, landscaping, other businesses of that type, and they tend to be impacted a great deal more by an increase in the minimum wage than businesses that rely upon higher-skilled workers. The increase in costs, even for these, excuse me, these low-skilled employers, may lead to an increase in prices. Now, the indication is that, well, we either lay off employees, or we increase our prices. In general, thank you, in general, I don't think that raising the minimum wage reduces the number of customers that a business has, or the need for workers to serve those customers. In fact, because minimum wage earners tend to spend pretty much every additional penny that they make, there may be increases in, excuse me for a moment, there may be increases in the sales of some of these minimum wage businesses, restaurants being probably the best example, retail stores being another very good example. Some businesses are going to see increases in revenues, some businesses may even see increases in their profits. They may decry the need to lay off employees, to raise their prices, and so forth, in the face of an increase in the minimum wage, but the experience in the real world has not shown that to be at all accurate. Now, there's another aspect of this as well. Raising the minimum wage actually tends to raise revenues for governments, both in the form of higher income tax withholding receipts, and higher gross receipts tax revenues. There's another side to that coin as well, and one that I'd like to focus on a little bit for a few moments, and that is, tends to reduce the expenses of government. As the Vice Speaker pointed out in his presentation early on, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, their Division of Social Welfare, reported in their 2015, fiscal year 2015 report, a reduction in the number of participants in many of the social welfare programs that they administer. Now, an interesting aspect of that is that Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, the Food Stamp Program, is fully federally funded. The rest of the programs are not, the rest of the programs are based upon matching funds. The federal government will kick in, say, 75% of the cost of the program, the local government funds 25% of the costs. But the federal government also puts in an expenditure cap, which may not meet that 75%, it may be 40% or 35%. I haven't looked at those numbers recently, because I don't really have any need to look at them. However, the bottom line there is that every additional dollar paid in social welfare benefits outside the SNAP program is a cost to the local government. It's not a cost borne by the federal government. It's a cost borne by the local government, and local government gets its revenues from taxpayers, which means that you and I, taxpayers in this community, end up subsidizing minimum wage employers, whose employees fall under the income thresholds that make them eligible for these welfare benefits that cost us all money. And that being the case, there's a certain amount of self-righteousness, I think, in the part of minimum wage employers, but I think we all have to keep in mind that they're paying below-poverty-level wages to their employees means that they are subsidized by the taxpayers, one way or another. An estimate that was done about five years ago in the States, and it was focused specifically on a large restaurant chain, a fast-food chain, indicated that they were subsidized by the taxpayers to the tune of $10,000 per employee, per year. Now, that's quite a subsidy. There was no reduction in the participation in aid to the blind, old-age assistance, aid to the permanently and totally disabled, and the Child Care Development Fund last year, but there was a reduction in participation in Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, Temporary Assistance to Needy Families, General Assistance, Medicaid, and the medically indigent program participation. Now, with the exception of SNAP, as I say, those are all programs that are almost entirely paid for, or the marginal costs are entirely paid for by the local government, by the local taxpayer. Now, looking at this a little bit differently, over time, prices have increased a lot more rapidly than the minimum wage rate, and that's resulted in cutting standards of living. As part of my written testimony, there is a graph that indicates that the minimum wage in 1983, at $3.25 an hour, was today's equivalent of $16.20 an hour. That's nearly twice what today's minimum wage is. It is no wonder that so many people in this community are reliant upon social welfare programs for their daily existence. There's another aspect of it as well, and I would not even pretend to say that raising the minimum wage has caused an expansion in our economy. I don't think it has, I think there have been a lot of other elements that have done that, and I don't think it's possible for anybody to sift through all those elements and figure out exactly what the impact of the minimum wage would be, despite a mandate from the last legislature to conduct such a study. Studies, though, have indicated that increasing the minimum wage also increases the rate of growth in the economy, simply because it provides for increases in consumption expenditures in the economy, thus calling forth the production of more goods and services. It's as simple as that. There's another aspect of this as well, which is probably going to be kind of the third rail for our government, and that is, a lot of studies have shown that raising the minimum wage is not the most effective way to raise standards of living for low-income individuals and households. There are a lot of minimum wage earners who are kids going to private schools, working for the summers, working weekends, and so forth, that their household incomes are already well above the poverty level. I'm going to go ahead and say it, a lot of studies have shown that raising the earned income tax credit is much more effective in raising the income of low-income households. And I know that's a third rail in this community, because it's one of those unfunded federal mandates that we all face. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you also for your participation this evening. Is there any, Mr. Vice Speaker?
Just one question, Mr. Bradley. There has been mention of the CPI's increase over the last quarter, and I was at a presentation that you made, and I, rather than my saying it, I think coming from someone with your credentials would have more credibility than my stating. Read the footnote.
Actually, from the fourth quarter of 2014 to the fourth quarter of 2015, consumer prices in Guam decreased. There was a large jump in the first quarter of 2016, based upon increases in a number of fees at the Guam Memorial Hospital, some of those fees went up by over 50%. And because medical care constitutes slightly over 20% of the average household's budget, or the representative household's budget, that had a major impact on the Consumer Price Index itself, causing it to rise by over 4% in that one quarter alone. Is that--
Sir Spardon.
I appreciate everything that you testified to, and in fact, everybody's testimony, but on that one particular point, is it safe to at least consider that maybe it was a drop in oil prices that caused the Consumer Price Index to drop?
I think that's a fair consideration.
Okay, thank you.
I have no, as I said, it would, particularly given the availability of socioeconomic data in Guam, I think it's virtually impossible to filter out all of the different elements that have led to changes in the performance of this economy.
And I appreciate that, because I just don't want to have to draw a straight-line conclusion that because of the minimum wage increase that the Consumer Price Index went down.
Well, I would certainly not level that contention, Senator.
All right, thank you.
Sir Snackless.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Dakinai, I found your testimony to be particularly compelling. I'm one of those guys where, you know, data, taken in general sense, if you don't drill down into it, you might misinterpret, and I particularly appreciated your ability to break out the job increase numbers, to speak specifically to the fact that they were in industries that were not typically minimum wage industries. My question is, given that we have an increase in construction spending, particularly with more money coming in for military construction projects, I'm concerned that the data may look like we have job increases overall, with those jobs being the jobs that are going up, but as we've discussed over the years here with respect to the military buildup, that, you know, we're going to see a rise and then a fall in military spending, and of course, with that construction spending, and with that, the jobs that come with that. And so, I'm just worried that we might be harming the local businesses that are not able to afford paying a minimum wage increase, because we're looking only at data that's showing overall jobs going up, when some of those industries might not be here, or those particular jobs might not be here, after things like the military buildup or those increases in construction spending take place. So I wanted to ask if you could go back to your testimony, and reiterate your breakdown of the jobs number, and how much of that was particularly in construction?
740.
740 of the new jobs created was construction?
Was construction, and it was a drop of 170 from the prior quarter.
Okay.
Yeah, so--
And so, so we're looking at a total of 1,200 increase in jobs, 740 was construction, and the rest was in--
That was in this report.
Okay, the rest was in what, what industry?
520 in hotel.
520 in hotel, so we're looking at 1,300 jobs in--
1,260.
And then--
And then add the 170 to it, that was lost.
Right, right, and then I really appreciated how you brought up how we've also had a lot of new businesses, large employers, particularly in those industries, come online, and the hotel side especially, and again, that's a temporary increase. You know, we're not going to have a new hotel going up every year. And so, Mr. Chairman, may I request that we enter that data into the committee report also?
And I'll send a copy of my testimony, I just hadn't addressed it and made it nice and pretty, so--
Right, right, but I mean--
I will send it in.
And so, for me, it's about balancing all those things out, because in the end, what we're trying to do here is build a sustainable economy, albeit, we're going to have those variables that are going to fluctuate up and down, but it's the local small businesses that are going to be here, you know, and they're the ones that are going to continue to open up shop and grow, and it's those kind of jobs that we want to create more of, and I think that as we try to explore how we can get those workers, you know, more pay, we need to do it in a way where we're balancing out against the risk of putting those very same businesses out of business. And so, I wanted to ask a question of Mr. Bradley, and, you know, I know that the data shows that the jobs, that the minimum wage, when you factor in inflation, could be at 1625 when you talk about purchasing power. My concern is, have you ever done a study that would show, though, where we would kind of break the glass ceiling in terms of the equilibrium between pushing towards that kind of a wage, and how that might affect existing businesses and their ability to stay open, or for new businesses to open?
No, I have not, I have a day job.
Okay.
I'm required to do a lot of other things.
I like to crunch all kinds of stuff on my part-time, too, but I mean--
But I think my--
My other question then would have been, you know, when we talk about all this data, I worry about the data that we don't see, you know, and does anybody in the panel have a resource that you can direct me to that could potentially help us to understand how many businesses did not expand their inventories, like, does the chamber take a survey?
We did a survey.
How many businesses did not open a second location? How many businesses did not open new positions? So that we can get an idea of what is not in the regularly-tracked data sets?
The chamber's survey.
Because those are all-- Because those are all things that might have happened if we did not have those increases.
Yeah, Shrim did a survey of their membership, and I believe that will be included in the written testimony from Rose Morales.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely would like to have an idea of what those figures look like. And I just wanted to conclude, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, we did increase the minimum wage to 8.25. I appreciate the local businesses making every effort that they can to try and continue operating within that framework. I would like for the data to be drilled down more, and I would like to look at the data that's not generalized, in order for us to understand what kind of opportunities were foregone as a result of that previous increase. And I'm not, definitely not of the opinion of us going back, you know, I don't think anyone here is saying that. But as we navigate going forward, I want to do so fully aware of what all those potential impacts might be. So if we could definitely have the CPI stuff, I'm sorry, the industry-specific jobs data that you provided, and the SHRM survey, that would be most appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sir Snackless. Any other follow-up comments or questions? If not, I also thank the panel for your participation this evening. I'd like to invite up Mr. Bobby Shringi. Okay. Okay, so I'll acknowledge that and enter that into the record. Okay, Mr. Burns, Craig Burns? Mr. Jeff Jones? Senator Sunny Orsini? We have room for one more for this panel, Mr. Fernando Estevez. And so for the record, Mr. Shringi's testimony is a mere testimony that Ms. Castro read, basically. I mean, it's what it looks like. Okay, well, maybe it's a... Okay. Nonetheless, it's here and it'll be in the committee report. Mr. Burns?
Okay, are we on? All right. First, I'd like to commend everyone. I don't see a single disposable water bottle or cup up there, so thank you very much. My name's Craig Burns. I'm the current president of the National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for inviting the social work community to come and provide testimony. Vice Speaker and the rest of the senators, thank you for this opportunity. So I'm here to testify in support of Bill 31233 to raise the minimum wage. As social workers, we're guided by a professional code of ethics, and I'm here representing the social work community, our 100 members of our local chapter, and the interest and passion of the social work community of Guam. One of the core values of our profession is social justice, which is emphasized in our code of ethics by the following quote, "Social workers' social change efforts are focused primarily on issues of poverty, unemployment, discrimination, and other forms of social injustice." So it initially seemed that the support of an increased minimum wage and a living wage would be the obvious position for us to take, and it is. As a national association, NASW supports a national economic policy that invests in human capital, and recognizes that a nation's well-being derives not only from an economic balance sheet, but also from the well-being of its members. Specifically, NASW supports broad social, economic, and political actions to end poverty and the vast inequalities in wealth and income. NASW supports a federal minimum wage indexed to cost of living increases and as a living wage. As I prepared this testimony, however, I realized it's not such a simple problem. A core foundation of social work practice is a systems-oriented ecological approach that strives to understand how systems interact with each other at all levels, micro, meso, and macro. So we do unequivocally support an increase in the minimum wage as a first step towards a living wage. And so we want to be clear, it's not a living wage, but it's a start. We also support seeking to have a thorough understanding of what the ripple effects of such a decision will be across the multiple systems that will be affected. And that does not mean we don't move forward. If we were to wait for our choices and our decisions to be convenient, to do the right thing, then we'd think about where we'd be today. A lot of the decisions and a lot of the right thing is not convenient at the time we make the decisions. We all know either firsthand or through family members or constituents, the sacrifices individuals and families earning minimum wage have to make. We know that single parents and families struggle to make ends meet, living paycheck to paycheck, just one illness away from ruin. And as others who have testified, I grew up with a single mother, and there were nights where she cried herself to sleep because she didn't know if she'd be able to feed us the next day. We know that on Guam at this very moment, there are hard-working parents who are worried about their power of water getting shut off, or if their children will eat tomorrow. We're all aware that the current minimum wage on Guam at just over $17,000 annually is well below the federal poverty level for a family of four, which is $24,250. All of us here know and understand the impact of economic insecurity on child development, the long-term health of our community, and the role it plays in the tragically high rates of non-communicable diseases on Guam. We understand how joblessness and economic insecurity, and the chronic stress that comes with it, contribute to the incidence of mental illness, family violence, suicide, substance abuse, crime, and diminished capacity for healthy family and community functioning. I'm confident everyone in this room has a clear comprehension of the damage economic insecurity inflicts on our children, on our environment, and on our island community. Each of us here understands these things. Yet it seems every time we have this discussion, we lose sight of the fact that there are human beings at the other end of the debate, and that's not something we should forget. So in conclusion, the National Association of Social Workers Guam Chapter supports the position of our national association, which is in line with this bill, and we support this bill. However, we also understand that Guam, due to geographical, economic, and political considerations, to name just a few, is in a unique situation that creates variables which may not exist in other regions, where more research has been done on the impact of minimum wage on the economy and the communities in which it's been implemented. It is important that as we look to extrapolate this data and experiences of other regions to the unique conditions of Guam, we take care in the process to examine the situation in a holistic and contextual framework. To do anything less would be a disservice to the minimum wage workers who this bill is designed to help and to whom we support as well. Thank you.
Thank you also. We do have a copy of your testimony, and it'll be entered into the committee report. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Jeff Jones.
Good evening, Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and Vice Speaker and Senators. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding Bill 31233, an act to repeal and reenact Section 3105, Article 1, Chapter 3 of Title 22 Guam Code Annotated, relative to responsibly raising the minimum wage. The key phrase here, I think, is responsibly raising the minimum wage. There's really nothing responsible about how this is being done. There is no independent economic impact statement done, as required by the current law. And while I agree with Vice Speaker that there has been enough time to find the funding and to have the study done, the fact still remains that the study was not done. Therefore, we should not move forward with this legislation until we follow the current law and have the data in hand to see how it will impact our economy. As the proverb goes, two wrongs don't make a right, and it is definitely not a responsible way to proceed. Instead, we should be working on finding or appropriating funding so the study can be done properly and quickly. What's the rush? As Vice Speaker pointed out previously, the Guam Consumer Price Index has actually decreased 2.1% since the last minimum wage increase. So in reality, wages went up and consumer prices went down, primarily due to the drop in fuel prices. And everyone's purchasing power increased by even more than the increase in minimum wage. So it would appear that we have some time to do this properly and legally. As the Vice Speaker also pointed out in his press release, that despite the last minimum wage increase, the Guam economy has created an additional 1,220 jobs. Of course, we don't know how many more jobs would have been created without the minimum wage increase, but we can be sure it would have been more than 1,220 that were created. That said, we can at least agree that the Guam economy is finally growing again, and that's good news for all of us. Most of us remember not too long ago when it wasn't, and how tough times were. I think the last thing we want to do, we all want to do, is to make a hasty decision without the data and cause this growth to slow or even to stop. There is no reason to rush this process unless, of course, there are other motives involved. Our economy is still very fragile, especially the tourism sector, where we are competing with many destinations in the region that already have lower airfare, lower room rates, and lower operating costs. Tourists have many options where to spend their money in the Pacific, and anything that increases our costs makes us less competitive as a destination. We need to be very careful not to make imprudent decisions without the necessary data that will cause long-term problems for our core industries. The other sector of the economy that will take the brunt of any minimum wage increase would be the small business owners. Many people don't realize that the majority of businesses in Guam are small businesses that employ only the owners and a handful of employees. Many of these businesses do not have the capital or margins to absorb the increase, and will have to trim personnel and do more work themselves if they can't increase their prices. Worst-case scenarios, they may have to close. I hope some of these small businesses will testify tonight and in the coming days. I have encouraged some of the small business owners that we do business with to testify, but unfortunately, some tell me that they feel intimidated or apprehensive to speak publicly about this, but when they vote this November, it will be in private. There are also unintended consequences that may occur by making hasty decisions without adequate data. For example, if we keep raising the minimum wage, we are going to lock out our young people from the workforce. How many businesses are going to hire high school students with no skills for part-time, after-school, or summer jobs at 10:10 an hour? I get numerous requests from friends and acquaintances about this time of year, asking if I have openings for summer jobs. At 7:25 an hour, it wasn't easy, but it was possible. At 8:25 an hour, it is even tougher. At 10:10 an hour, I'm afraid I'm going to have to give my own teenagers pink slips. Seriously, though, whatever the minimum wage is, we need to make an allowance for our young people so that they can be hired and gain some experience before they have to enter the workforce full-time. Another unintended consequence of raising the minimum wage is the increase in immigration of our neighbors to Guam looking for more work. More will come looking for higher wages and a brighter future for their family, and who can blame them? Unfortunately, more will end up unemployed and on public assistance as the gap between their skills and the minimum wage widens. We, as a community, are already carrying a heavy load due to the unfunded compact impact, and this is just... And this will just grow as more people come to Guam looking for better pay but without the necessary skills. Also, tomorrow in the States, Obama, the Obama administration will unveil a new rule that will more than double the current salary rate, from $23,660 to $47,476, required to be exempt from overtime pay. This change alone is expected to affect millions of workers in the U.S. and certainly benefit thousands of workers locally. Until this new rule is officially announced and the accompanying guidelines issued, it is uncertain how local business will be impacted, but we know it will mean additional costs. This is another reason why we need to wait and to slow the process down. We need to consider all the data and determine how it will affect our economy as a whole before moving forward. What about the government of Guam? Has anyone run the numbers to see what the minimum wage increase to 10:10 an hour will have on the budget? I did a quick calculation based on the Guam Department of Labor's Minimum Wage Impact estimates released April 28, 2016. If my calculations are correct, based on 1,379 GovGuam employees that are at or below the proposed minimum wage of 10:10 an hour, it will cost the government somewhere between 2.8 and 5.5 million more per year. And that's not including any overtime or other wage increases that will surely come because of wage compression. As you can see, there's a lot to consider, and we, as a community, need more information to make an informed decision. We have a lot more questions than answers, and we need more answers before we can proceed prudently. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, I do have a copy of your testimony, and it'll be entered into the records. Going, Mr. Estevez?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the testimony you have before you is a draft. The official testimony for the record will be submitted. This one might just have a couple typos.
Okay, so take note of that, and we'll be sure to correct, to submit the correct version.
I want to add the letterhead, all that good stuff for you. Mr. Chairman, Vice Speaker, Honorable Senators, thank you for having me this evening. I'm Fernando Estevez, a small business owner, and at this time, I'm in opposition to Bill 312-33. We're here this evening to discuss a very subjective topic, even though we have yet to determine the baselines. It has to be understood that a living wage and minimum wage are mutually exclusive. As a small business owner, my lowest-paid employee makes $10 an hour starting. At the end of this, his first year, I have every intention on raising it. I can only speak for my own business, which will be directly affected through potential inflation due to the minimum wage increase. The purpose of minimum wage initially enacted federally in 1938 was to protect workers from exploitation. And I ask you now, Vice Speaker, will you say publicly that it's your belief that all of these employers are exploiting their employees' warranting legislative interference? A living wage, as defined by Merriam's dictionary, is an amount of money you are paid for a job that is large enough to provide you with the basic things such as food and shelter needed to live an acceptable life. Currently, most individuals who earn minimum wage qualify for both housing assistance and SNAP, which covers a large portion of their livelihood. So let's ask the question, who's ultimately responsible for the livelihood of the people? Is it the employers, or the government on the backs of these employers? Or is it up to the individual to take responsibility of their own livelihood? The question's rhetorical, because there's no simple answer. My testimony this evening is not a stab at the people who are struggling and need support. I, myself, come from very humble beginnings, going to war on multiple occasions to create opportunities for myself. I know there are income disparities, but I don't believe that blind increases are the answer. If minimum wage increases are the answer, then I am in full support. However, we've yet to see a non-bias, independent economic impact study. I understand that you gave a deadline to the administration. Through my research, I discovered you didn't bother to appropriate funds to conduct the study. Furthermore, as difficult as you made it, the administrative administration found a way, and there was a bid put out, to have the study conducted, and once again, our complicated and loophole-riddled procurement law strikes again, but that's a conversation for another day. In all fairness, Mr. Vice Speaker, I studied your 53-page slide presentation on minimum wage while conducting my own research. I'd first like to refer to Slide 12, which depicts private sector jobs in various markets before and after the minimum wage increases. I would like to focus on a few of these sectors: agriculture, general contracting, special trade contractors, food service, retail, and hotel. These reflect many jobs that typically pay minimum wages. Agriculture was hit the hardest, receiving a net loss of 84 jobs at 27%. Retail trade had a net loss of 283 jobs. Food service saw an increase in nine jobs, and the hotels lost nine jobs, which indicate stagnation. Logically, it's safe to assume this would be a huge net loss if it wasn't for the recent spike in terrorism we've had over the past years. General contractors and special trade contractors saw an increase of 1,250 jobs combined, and it's obvious this is due to the military buildup. When we look at the CPI as referenced by many of the gentlemen here, that's, it's obvious that, too, is in direct relation to the shale boom and decrease in oil prices, but that's not going to last forever. Now referring to Slide 35, with your proposed minimum wage increase would still place low-wage employees below the poverty line, still qualifying for government benefits. A family of four would make $20,200 per year, plus $6,050 in EITC, and if you include SNAP benefits of at least $3,840, at a grand total of $30,090, which is equivalent to $15.60 per hour. As employers, how do we fix wage disparities within our own companies? If we have employees at 1560 per hour who are making as much as low-wage employees If we have employees at fifteen-sixty per hour who are making as much as low-wage employees with benefits but with more taxes, we'll have serious morale issues. The solution we're stuck with is wage scaling. We'll have to occur to address this disparity if we want to maintain morale and match potential inflation to take care of our employees, and we all know the effect that goes on with that with other businesses. In summary, Mr. Vice Speaker, it's more than just nineteen-hundred-and-seventy-six per year per employee. I speak for many when I say, "We started from the bottom, and now we're here." Without a bottom, where is the character-building incentive to move up? As sitting senators, you should focus on creating opportunities for individuals. We have shortages in nursing and skilled, nurses and skilled construction workers that pay well. Please focus on this instead of buying votes paid for by our local employers. Again, I'm Fernando Estevas, and I do not support Bill 312-33 at this time, but pending your appropriation to fund your mandated economic study and its completion, I will support whatever findings come from it. Sezus Massey.
Sezus Massey. Be sure we get the corrected version. Senator Sez.
Hafedey, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, Mr. Vice Speaker. Just for the record, you know, I served in this body maybe twenty or more years ago, and as a former Democratic, you know, senator, you know, I do salute Vice Speaker, you know, Cruz with the noble intent of this legislation. However, I wear a different hat now. I am a journeyman, so to speak. I run a small local business, a barbecue business, in the Chamora Village, and having heard the economists and several, and some of the senators point out at the outset of my, my statement about numbers, I, too, have had the opportunity to actually sit where you're very, you know, where you sit right now and have, have had to grapple with the challenges of the dearth of data, economic data, current account balances, CPI, and whatnot, and just, just watching the slides and hearing various people throw numbers about, it is so difficult to actually find hard data from which to draw empirical, you know, analysis, and empirical analysis, normative analysis. My statement relies heavily on normative, because I can go onto Google and I can actually find, you know, top-three arguments for the measure, top-three arguments against the measure. So I like to make that distinction very clear to the members of the committee, Mr. Chairman, that my statement is purely based on my normative experience as a small, local business owner. And I like to, into my, my statement, I like to also qualify local businesses as well. Hafedey, my, my brother, my brother Buddy and I, excuse me, it's just, I didn't have to do this when I was here, and it's my refusal to get bifocals. Hafedey, my brother Buddy and I are the co-owners of Osu Smokehouse. We oppose Bill 312-33, which proposes to hike up the hourly minimum wage rate to nine dollars and twenty cents in early 2017, and then to raise it again to ten dollars and ten cents on January 1, 2018. Osu is a small, local incubator business located in the Chamora Village. We specialize in smoking whole primal cuts of meats, for example, brisket, pork shoulder, beef clod, steamship round roast, and whole hog, using local fuels, sources such as locally harvested hardwoods like Tongan-Tongan, mango, chico, and agao. These larger meat cuts are smoked between twelve to eighteen hours. We don't employ the use of electricity, propane gas, charcoal, only wood. As a result, the fire boxes of Osu's smokers require to be managed by cooks trained in fire building and management, plus possessing some understanding of meat science and the principles of thermodynamics. As you can see, our business is both art and craft. As such, it's labor-intensive, Mr. Chairman, requiring three shifts to cook a single load of brisket, anywhere from two-hundred to three-hundred pounds per load, all turned by hand at different times of the cooking process, while holding the pit smoker temperature at exactly two-and-a-quarter degrees by making necessary adjustments in air vents and flues. I had spoken to several senators more than a year ago about the initial measure in 2014 that proposed to raise the minimum wage rate from seven-and-a-quarter to eight-and-a-quarter in early 2015. I shared with them my concerns, particularly the impact of small, local businesses. The proposed increase would yield higher payroll and benefits, forcing us to reduce staff, increase commodity prices of our vendors, force us to raise menu prices, thus passing the cost to our loyal customers. We keep a close eye on hours because overtime pay affects our bottom line. I was told by these senators that my concerns were unfounded based on the numbers they saw from several studies, Mr. Chairman, and that I shouldn't worry. Well, I'm here to report back to you that all of my concerns that I've just enumerated were confirmed by the initial implementation of the increase of January 1, 2015. Now, our payroll and benefits, or during the time, our payroll and benefits swell, so we laid off staff from eleven to six. Our vendors raised their commodity prices. My brother and I worked longer hours to reduce overtime pay and benefits. We, in turn, raised our menu prices, passing the cost off to customers. And if you had the chance to see Chamora Village in the last couple of years, most of the plate lunches there, Mr. Chairman, were, you could find plates anywhere between four to six dollars. You'd be hard-pressed to find the same three-choice menu items on those plates at those prices now. Most of the prices, I think I probably am the, the menu price leader there, because our mission and our absolute refusal to cut quality and, on our products, we maintain the very best, you know, meats we can actually source, and so, as a result, our mission is to produce the best barbecue in the region, if not the world. So, like most businesses, as they've testified before you and the other distinguished members of this body, we had to make the hard decisions, and we were forced between our mission to provide a service, and mind you, a value-added service that we created. So this value-added service, you know, stays within our economy because it's community-based. Our money, our revenues, go into local financial institutions. It stays here. They're not remitted. They're not like big multinational corporations, Mr. Chairman. So that's what you will find in the village. So I make it very clear, not empirical, but definitely normative. Our business, Mr. Chairman, like our industrial base, is largely a service-based industry, which means the jobs are lower skilled, thus lower wage. Our economic base can't absorb the higher wage hike without having detrimental effects on employment, consumer prices, and on local startup businesses. I forget which senator mentioned it, maybe it was Senator Siniklas, had a very good question about data mining regarding businesses. What I didn't see on the slide, what I didn't see on the slide here were, in 2014, those existing businesses who had licenses and, and a contrast between 2015 to see whether those existing businesses prior to the increase are still doing business, i.e., did they, did they renew their businesses? Moreover, Mr. Chairman, did, how many new businesses actually sought to actually open their doors and hang their shingles? That right there is a telltale sign. Again, not your fault, but the dearth of economic data. How can you make responsible public policy proposals and laws without having the true economic data that, you know, is unbiased by, you know, having the right people actually accumulate the, the numbers? And so it's so difficult, which is why I chose not to extrapolate on numbers, but to actually use my small business, Mr. Chairman. So another thing I also would like to caution, Mr. Chairman, is this had also something very similar to Guam, but not, not like Guam. Several years ago, American Samoa had the unfortunate incident of having the federal, the federal minimum wage applied to it, and if you're not aware, President Obama had to step in officially and had to negate the application of the federal minimum wage because of its deleterious effect on the local economy. Like most underdeveloped economies, there, there is a large, there's large job numbers in the government, smaller in the private sector. So when, when the, when the measure took effect, the, the local coffers took massive, took a massive hit. It was unsustainable, Mr. Chairman, unsustainable. Like I mentioned, we're not like American Samoa, but this universal one-size-fits-all isn't the panacea, and we have to be very mindful about the nature of our industrial base. If you insist on implementing the measure, however, then please explore ways in which to make the playing field fair for small businesses. Here's a proposal: To reduce the GRT, the gross receipt tax, from four percent to two percent to small, local businesses which have a financial stake in this community. I'm not referring to, to businesses who actually remit its net profits to its corporate HQ or headquarters. I'm referring to small businesses that actually have a financial stake in our community that help to actually foster community development. Another, another option is to increase the Dave Santos Small Business Enhancement Act from, I think it's forty, Mr. Chairman, I could be wrong, to a hundred thousand dollars, and to expand the applicability for three consecutive years. In closing, we, we stand by our position on Bill 312-33 and hope you take the time and care to deliberate on the potential impact this measure will have on our island's economy and, more importantly, our people. Thank you for your time and attention. Sezus Massey, con respeto, si sunny or sin.
Thank you, Senator Sinie. I see you still have your keen legislative skills.
Thank you, sir. I choose to apply it to my own shop, my little shop there, sir, across the street.
And you offered some alternatives if the proposal's going to go forward, so I appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other, any follow-up questions or comments? Thank you. I would dismiss this panel, and thank you for your participation. We have two more that signed up, and if there are any of you who would like to testify but have yet to sign up, you're welcome to come forward. Director Balaeto, Department of Administration, and Mary Rhodes. Is this it? So this is exhausted, this is our, this, okay. So this is the last two individuals. Okay, and then I'll just recognize you in the order that you signed up, so that's you, Director Balaeto.
Buenas en Hafedey, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. I thought, I think we've heard a lot of testimony tonight with reference to, like, the impact on the private sector, so I'm gonna do my testimony just on the portion that affects the government's concerns. For all of you that don't know, my name is Christine Balaeto. I'm the Director of Administration, and the Department of Administration would like to comment on the bill and not to express a position in support or opposition to it. We believe that if this bill were to become law, it would cause what is called compression for both the private sector and the government of Guam that is covered by the Competitive Wage Act of 2014. Again, the compression problem would not only occur in the private sector but in the government of Guam for government entities that follow the Competitive Wage Act. If the minimum wage was raised to nine-twenty, this would force the starting salaries to be higher than pay grade D, Step One, which is at nine-fifteen per hour, and then there are some positions within the government that are assigned pay grades lower than pay grade D, such as Clerk One, which has a pay grade of C. These increases in starting salary would necessitate a review of the entire pay scale plan of CWA each year. This could warrant an across-the-board increase in the pay plans, which potentially would have a huge financial impact on the government of Guam. Please also note that we inquired with the Department of Health and Social Services on the reduction of public, public assistance clients to see if there was any correlation to the increase in minimum wage. According to their deputy director, out of the twenty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve negative actions in FY 2015, only seventeen percent were denied or terminated because of excess in income. The rest were denied or terminated because the applicants or recipients failed to submit the required documents, failed to meet the other eligibility requirements which resulted in their disqualification, requested termination because the participant moved out of Guam, or the client requested for termination of cause for other reasons. These denials represent eighty-three percent of, again, the twenty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-twelve negative actions. So as Mr. Bradley commented earlier, the decrease in public assistance is, cannot be generalized to the minimum wage increase. The majority of denials were for the program, were for other factors, and not because, again, participants were ineligible due to the higher wage earnings. We commend our colleagues at the Department of Health and Social Services for their work in enforcing eligibility requirements. Based on the language of this bill in its current form, we do not see that the proposal to raise the minimum wage was based on any wage study. We understand that 3105.1 of the same chapter mandated an economic impact statement to have been issued relative to the minimum wage increase. Media reports have highlighted the public assistance program's participation as one of the indicators that raising minimum wage has had a positive impact. The statistics from the department are contrary to this assertion. Therefore, there may be other false presumptions with which the decision to introduce this bill is based on. Without a valid impact assessment, the bill's proposal to raise the minimum wage to nine-twenty per hour and then to ten-ten per hour would be, would appear to be arbitrarily set. We urge this legislative body to consider the impact of raising the minimum wage on our government pay scale and the financial implications should a reevaluation need to be done for all employees. We also respectfully request that an economic impact study, as mandated by 3105.1, be conducted prior to making a decision on this bill, which could be detrimental to our island. Thank you again for the opportunity to express our comments.
Thank you also for your participation. Ms. Rhodes?
Hafedey, I know everybody's been here long, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and before I get started, I just, I know everybody has a copy of the actual testimony, and I want to thank the chairman's staff in helping me get copies to you. So, Hafedey, Mr. Chairman, Vice Speaker, and all of our committee representatives and legislative representatives, I'm very proud to be here. My name is Mary Rhodes. I'm the president for the Guam Hotel Restaurant Association for the last eleven years. And before I read my testimony, I just kind of wanted to point out a couple of things. I know that we've all said that there are statistics, and although there are always statistics, there's other statistics. statistics, there's other statistics that's always going to debunk either the myths or, you know, challenge other things depending on how you research your information. And I think we have to be very careful because back in 2014, when we first addressed this, we made decisions based on data only from North America and in other places. Although we shared stories about American Samoa and what the things, the detrimental things that happened there, we've also seen changes in some of those states. When Obama first tried to change, make these changes with the minimum wage, it was not agreed by the Congress, so individual states started to look at making implementations. A lot of studies have been made, and there are a lot of papers out there by economists, just so you know. There are articles and journal articles also with regards to, from The Economist to New York Times, to different policy institutes showing the impacts of what it takes of taking a minimum wage increase and making it across the board. You're looking at places like, we always talk about California and New York, but there are places within California that don't compare to Los Angeles. And if you look at some of these articles, they compare Bakersfield, for example. There are different areas that are low-income areas versus the rest of those states. So even those states have disagreements, and they have seen that this has not worked throughout. And it is not a cookie cutter plan, and we should not be referring to our U.S. mainland for examples of how these work or don't work. It needs to be Guam. We need to look at the impact of Guam, and we haven't done so because we don't have the independent economic study. I disagree that there are nominal changes. I think that there are direct and indirect impacts. And I know that Mr. Chairman and also Senator Siniklas and Senator Espada, you talked about, you know, where can we find this data? Well, that's what an independent economic study is meant to be. That is what it's for. You will find that data if you do it right, you fund it properly, and you report the data with transparency. So your, all of your questions and everybody else's questions here will be answered when you actually do the work. And we actually follow the public mandate that's required and report that objectively. Now, there's information that was provided, but it's also rather vague. And I think a lot of people have referred to things that were reported, not just in the December 2050 Bureau of Labor Statistics report, which I know that, you know, Senator Siniklas, you really identified together with our chairman, or chairperson, Laura Doc and I. But Gary Hiles has done a great job always, and he provides that information, but I highly question too the responses. It's not completely accurate when he recently reports that zero are reporting in at not making minimum wage. Everything is higher at 910 or 915 an hour. So I think that a lot of those things need to be addressed, and I think the most important thing is we not generalize, we not refer to our U.S. mainland counterparts, or not even counterparts, but the U.S. mainland. And we look at other examples, but we learn from them. But more importantly, we need to look within our own market and use our economics with our data, our employment data, and all of the results that come from within our region. So on behalf of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, we express our opposition to oppose Bill 312-33, which seeks to responsibly raise the minimum wage. I'll skip through some of the other stuff. You all have copies of the testimony. GHRA does represent more than 300 members. We're the non-government organization that has been around for 44 years here on the island. We are comprised of 300 members, which represent more than 1.3 million visitors, which represent 60% of the gross domestic product, and gainfully employs more than 30% of the population, which a lot of our GRTs and our hotel occupancy tax and other taxes come from. During my testimony in 2014, GHRA adamantly spoke against the first introduction of the minimum wage increase, even as we considered the negotiations of a compromise of a dollar. The introduction of a wage increase then and now are both arbitrary and wrong without conducting an independent economic study. The IES, as mandated by Public Law 32178, should be conducted and the results released for public consumption before any consideration can be made for a wage increase. In the government of Guam's Department of Labor, which already, Chairperson Laura Doc and I reported, there were 2.1,220 jobs reflected as an increase in 2015 as a year-to-year comparison. That's a 2.26%. That's just comparing numbers. That does not justify anything. If you look down and drill down in the data, my simple math, in looking at only the ones that we obviously know, like Dusitani, Lotte Hotel, Construction of 740, GRMC, those were 1,840 jobs. And that's not even considering any of the losses. Those are 1,840 jobs. If you count Lotte, Dusitani, GRMC, and Construction, that's really a loss of 620 jobs, if you look at it, a net loss, not a growth. So there's something in between there that obviously we're implored to look into and drill down further. GHRA asks our honorable senators here to vote against Bill 312-33 and follow the mandate of PL 32-178 and do what is right and just. Employers are dealing with other requirements that will increase costs, such as the recent announcement of the Fair Labor Standards Act changes with the federal white-collar exemption rule. There are talks and bills introducing changes to the Family Medical Leave Act and possibly changes to our group health insurance employer contributions. Those changes with increasing number of required licenses and fees that I've seen, especially in the last three years, that have impacted, and tourism is not just hotels and restaurants. Tourism is the entire service industry of the hospitality. We also have financial institutions and other types of services that should be considered. But those increases in the last three years that we've seen from public health, Guam PA, ABC Compliance Branch, and all of the other government agencies have added these increased costs from the government of Guam to our industries, and we've continued to grow despite all of that because we are constantly making changes and rightsizing our operations. So some of those mean lost jobs and reduction of hours. We cannot afford to make decisions because of what we think is best. We need real objective data like the IES to make informed decisions that will produce better results. Today, GHRA seeks your support in opposing Bill 312-33. The legislature of Guam should be creating laws to help grow the economy and not suppress or inhibit growth by increasing the cost of doing business on Guam through increased wages, taxes, fees, and other government regulations. The private sector is supposed to help create jobs, grow the economy, develop our skilled workers, focus on performance, increase productivity, pay for performance to justify higher wages, to remain competitive, and increase, we have increased turnover costs with recruiting, training, and retention. Guam is a tourist destination that competes with Southeast Asia, not the U.S. mainland, but Southeast Asia, where the cost of labor, goods, and services are a lot less expensive than today's rates, notwithstanding anything that you consider in the future. GBB and tourism stakeholders have done an excellent job over the years in diversifying the market so that we can promote Guam, increase our arrivals, and deliver on the services in order to ensure a sustainable future in tourism. Raising prices will have a rippling effect on consumer goods and services. Businesses will adjust the cost of doing business and transfer the cost of the consumer in the way of increases prices, and businesses will have to perform in difficult market conditions considering where we have the barrage of increasing government and regulatory requirements. According to the American Hotel Lodging Association and Asian American Hotel Owners Association, a report that they did, that was an independent study, did state that those in the industry who would most negatively be affected by extreme minimum wage increases would be the small business entrepreneurs, including small businesses that are hotels, restaurants, and service industry. The legislature and the government of Guam have to understand the scale, sorry, the scale effect. The scale effect is the increased cost, is that increased cost equals increased prices, like the supply and demand that Joe Bradley was referring to. This accounts for the multiplier effect on goods and services. You're not going to see it just once, or twice, or three times. You're going to see it from everyone else who's going to not absorb it, but pass it on. Those increased costs, this accounts for consumers, consumers will purchase fewer goods because of increased prices, and employers will hire fewer workers. In addition, there is the substitution effect, which is the decrease in the use of low-wage workers and introduction of more technology. For example, Wendy's just made a huge announcement this week through the National Restaurant Association that they will be implementing new technology to replace workers throughout the United States of America. So there are things that they will start looking for, and they will remove things like service charge, which pays for other things, which goes to employees' wages. Employees' wages should be based on market conditions and productivity. Increasing the minimum wage will adverse, will have adverse economic outcomes that will affect productivity and service levels because of that ripple effect. Increasing in employees' pay also means, again, cost of goods and services, increasing both employer and employees' income taxes, rising market prices, hurting job growth, lowering profits, and fewer reinvestments into capital expenditures. For the employer, the impact can include, and this is what has happened in the last two years, adjusted staffing and productivity, changes in compensation programs, additional taxes of about a one-third, changes in fringe benefits, reductions or removing job opportunities for 14- to 17-year-old categories, changing job perks, and having a more selective hiring process than, like what we heard earlier, the service industry has mostly low-skilled workers. What we forget is there are a lot of high-skilled workers in the tourism industry too. So a good percentage of our employees don't make the minimum wage, but there are, there is a percentage of those who do. And with that, even with a minimum wage increase, Guam is not able to pay, you took away the opportunity to pay the tip credit system. The tip credit system, which is the federal wage that guarantees that all tipped employees will be paid the suggested new minimum wage, and employers must maintain records proving that they are complying with the local minimum wage by adding the reduced wage plus tips to make up the total wages. Most states do not have a tip credit system because they're living in high-income areas. But those who don't actually continue to have it. The tip credit system is very common, and it's still used to allow flexibility for employees to make more than the minimum wage. So example, like a server or anybody who receives tip in a restaurant or at a hotel would be part of that tip jar, or tips received at the cashier. That allows the employer to pay more for the staff in the back or the staff in the front who aren't getting tips. So by actually paying 825 plus tips, they've had to maintain what everybody else is making. And it's actually creating inequity within the group because those individuals are not eligible to participate in tips. So you're really hurting everybody, and there seems to be a morality or morale issue when you're starting to actually go higher with 1010. For the individual person, increasing the minimum wage will decrease opportunities, which includes fewer entry-level positions, shifting from full-time to part-time to even casual employees, reduction in hours, elimination of jobs, changes in scheduling, compression of wages, which has been discussed at length here, changes in pay allocation of service charges. Some businesses have removed service charges altogether to be eligible to employ because that's at the discretion of the employer. Now, that's just going straight to operations to cover breakage and other things such as minimum wage increase. They're also looking at inequity and risking their welfare benefits because it is more profitable for them to have the earned income tax credit. I think it's estimated that they get 9,000 to 12,000 back if they hit that max of 12,000 to 18,000. If you put them over the threshold, they're probably going to just go to part-time or take fewer hours so that they can remain eligible. Where you need to fix it is the earned incomes tax credit, and you need to look at our welfare program and work with public health on trying to find better ways to incentivize those who are in those categories to further, to better themselves and to get opportunities to have higher skilled jobs. If the issue is to increase the standard of living of our island residents, especially those earning low wages, why not focus on our efforts and funding on initiatives that will make a real difference? Such as, we all talked about the public education system and the dropout rates and increasing graduates, skilled workers, and workforce development and training programs. We know that raising the standard of living is a complex and long-term solution, which requires the government of Guam to provide that structure and the programs and services to develop its people and grow the economy for longer-lasting changes. It is unrealistic to think that increasing the standard of living will come from increasing the minimum wage. It is not meant to be that. It is meant to be for an entry-level wage position that enables workers to gain the necessary skills to become a contributing citizen. I know that Senator Siniklas two years ago shared his stories about when he started. And I too, I started working at 14 at Townhouse. My children, both my kids, started working at age 14. My daughter is 17 now and starting to work this summer. I don't think those opportunities will be available at 1010 an hour. It just would be impossible for anyone at an entry level at that age, especially with increasing requirements of that age level to be in the workforce. But I encourage all of you, because one of the things that I did talk about was, which is the tip credit system. There are a lot of things on the Department of Labor website, and I think that all of you should at least review the federal tip credit system because, as former Senator Orsini had mentioned, some of the solutions, these are ways to still offer a higher wage to employees who are already making sometimes 25 to 40 dollars an hour and still benefit others so that we're not only paying minimum wage at service industry. We can pay more, but we need to be able to spread the wealth to everybody. So there are ways to do it, and there are also wages that are eligible for youth categories and things like that. So I would encourage all of you to go to the Department of Labor website, just check out that section.
But the tip credit system is already a law by law, by local statute, right?
No, you took it away when we went to 825 an hour. If you look at the law, the way it is written, it does not allow for tip credit to be done. It used to be allowed, and I've met with Roman Canata to talk about this at Department of Labor. And it used to be allowed on Guam, but it no longer is allowed because you have to pay 825 plus all of the tips.
So you're saying that all restaurants and bars are paying minimum wage, and in addition to that, their employees are getting all their tips?
They're supposed to. Yes. They're supposed to, and if they're not, that's where Senator Siniklas and I talked about it. Those should be reported to Department of Labor.
I asked a question, and I...
Yes, they're supposed to pay 825 plus tips, and they're supposed to record tips.
So when did the Department of Labor make that ruling that they have to pay minimum wage, then they get to keep all their tips in addition to the minimum wage?
That's been in the books for a while now. And actually, if you look at the language, is the way it's written in the public law, it says 825, and then service charge is a differential, right? That's allocated by the employer. But tips is always considered part of wages. It's together in the public law. So it's 820, and if you look at DOL underneath where it says Guam, it says 825 is the minimum. So you can't go below. Whereas the federal tip wages, and I did screenshot this, the federal wages, you can go below.
Because the tip wage credit, as long as you don't go below the minimum wage.
Right, and you have to have accounting procedures to make sure, but it does allocate for that. And so that's something that we're asking should be reconsidered because that really did hurt the service industry. You're disincentivizing the employees.
Have you surveyed your members to see how many restaurants and bars are no longer providing for a tip credit?
I can honestly tell you that I've met, and actually Senator Anna's team has met with me on this. A lot of GHRA's members, all the GHRA members understand this. We have Patrick Condeletta and even Roman come to our meetings. The challenge is that not everybody is a member of GHRA, so you're really talking about a huge, you know, other businesses need to be educated if they haven't been already. That hasn't been the case in quite a while. And so if there are any concerns, they should be reporting that to Department of Labor, actually.
So this is very helpful for the employees out there. So they, if an employee is not getting the minimum wage and their employer is using the tips that they get to bridge that salary so that their $8.25 an hour somehow is reduced to $4 an hour, provided their tips make up for that $8.25 hourly wage.
Right.
They should... They should report that.
Right. So Guam is listed with every other territory and state on how they apply minimum wage. And Guam states 825, so it does not allow for tip credit. And so we're asking as the service industry to allow for that because it gives everybody an opportunity to still follow the law, pay the minimum wage, but allow other opportunities where the service industry employees can participate in the program and make more money.
Because at the time, the minimum wage was being discussed, in some cases, their hourly wage went down to $2 an hour because they make a lot of tips.
Well, at the time, it was allowed to go as low as 225, just so you know. So right now, I think the average is $5 something?
I was just rounding downwards, so you're right.
Right. No, it was allowed back then, but that hasn't been the case for some time now, and everybody is supposed to pay 825 plus tips. Service charge, again, is at the discretion of the employer. So that's not included in tips and wages, but tips is part of wages. And it also needs to be declared. So there are, the microsystems or any other point-of-sale system automatically allows for, when you close out a shift, to record your tips. So there shouldn't be any problem or any excuse why tips aren't being recorded and also being given to the, that employee who works during that shift. Now, remember, tips are also, could be shared with all of the staff. So if they are sharing it with front of the house and back of the house, so I'm saying there's not a, you know, there's not one system that can be applied, but you have to ensure you have a system that's fair and it's documented within your department and it's shared across the board, if that's the case. Otherwise, it goes to that employee who works during that hour. But those employees have to work during that shift.
No, I...
But I would encourage that you guys bring in Roman and Patrick.
No, I perfectly understand, and the reason why I asked if that's no longer allowed because it's not, it was just very recently that some waitstaff brought this to my attention regarding how they're being paid. Mr. Vice Speaker?
No, I just wanted to say, yesterday, I met with some representatives of one of the restaurants on island and suggested to them that you might want to conduct a roundtable with GHRA and all the other businesses to make, have a discussion on how we deal with this. Because they weren't even willing to say that their practice was the practice throughout the industry, and I'm glad that Ms. Rhodes confirmed that, that there's various practices throughout the restaurant business, and we've got to figure out how people are handling it and what the best way to have, as she puts it, a uniform system that can work.
Well, you can't control how the employer's private sector pays the employee. What they have to do is meet the minimum requirements of the wages of what is eligible to that employee. Tips are not discretionary, but it can be modeled in different ways. So if it goes only to that employee or if it's shared amongst people who are part of that tip pool, but they all work during that one hour, that one shift, so it varies, but you can't really standardize.
But it can't be used to reduce the minimum wage.
Correct.
The tips can't be used to reduce the minimum wage.
Yes, so as long as we're all clear, that is what was decided when you passed that law. So there is a standard format, but there are variations of that standard, but the standard still is 825 plus tips. That is the standard. But you can't really enforce a private sector to, on how to distribute that, right? That's all the extra income, but as long as you record it and you distribute it properly and you have a policy for it and it's clear to all employees, then you've done your due diligence to ensure that everybody understands how the tip is shared or it goes directly to that employee. But what we're required to pay for is the wages that that employee was hired for because you can't really mandate tips. We don't have mandatory tip here.
No, I don't think...
And it's very difficult in Asia when tips don't even exist in Asia.
I don't think the vice speaker was suggesting a uniform policy with respect to how tips were divvied up, but the fact that the service industry has to comply with the law that says you can't use a tip to...
I understand, but that is not the...
That you can't use the tip to credit the hourly wage so that the minimum wage...
Right, but I would, I guess...
We're in agreement.
Right, but I would just, because I've heard this as one of the arguments to do this, and it's not addressing the core problem here. It is not a reason to go and raise minimum wages because you all think that it's not being paid properly. That is a Department of Labor issue, and it needs to be addressed to Department of Labor. We are not going to all make changes to policy and increase minimum wage because you don't think that they're getting paid the proper wages. That is, that is a different issue, you know what I mean? That is not a reason to increase minimum wage. They're not following the law.
And I don't, and I don't think that suggestion is being made.
That same argument was made last time, though. And that's why I'm cautioning everybody that if that is the thought process, that is not the problem we're tackling here. Minimum wage does not fix that issue. That is a separate issue, and it should not be correlated with this at all.
Did you search this?
I'm so glad we're talking about this. It's actually really been bothering me. I want to have a conversation about service charges, and I'm very glad that you're making a clear distinction tonight between what is regarded as tip wages that employees are entitled to and what are service charges that you're saying are employer discretionary. You know, all my life as a patron, going to our Guam restaurants, I would always see service charge on the, on a lot of the receipts, not all of them, but on a lot of them. And I grew up with the understanding that that 10% service charge was the tip. And a lot of our local people grew up thinking that the 10% service charge was the tip. And tonight, we have confirmation that it's not the tip. And tonight, we have confirmation that it's a discretionary charge that the employer can choose to pay the server or not. And I wanted to ask a question because I saw an email that really bothered me, and it kind of set me into a course of thought that I just, I'm glad we're having this conversation, but it was an email to train restaurants to use the service charge to offset the increase in the minimum wage by reducing the service charge that employees were receiving and allowing the employer to retain that to offset the cost. Did you guys coordinate that kind of a training?
Well, first of all, if, no matter what we learned as children, I've learned a lot of things as a child, but as, when we become adults, it's our responsibility to educate ourselves.
Right.
So first of all, when you increase the minimum wage, all of you had an opportunity to see what's in the books for our wages. Wage and service charge are separate, and it is written into the law what service charge really is. It's not like we're pulling the wool over your eyes. It's clearly stated in the law and has always been. It's never been changed. And just so you know, it's not just Guam. It's everywhere.
Right.
This is actually the federal definition of service charge, and this is from the Department of Labor website. A compulsory charge for service, for example, 15% of the bill is not a tip. Such charges are part of the employer's gross receipts, okay? So they pay taxes on that. So it's part of their gross receipts. Sums distributed to employees from service charges cannot be counted as tips received, but may be used to satisfy the employer's minimum wage and overtime obligations under the Fair Labor Standards Act. If an employee receives tips in addition to service charge, those tips may be considered in determining whether the employee is a tipped employee and in the application of the tip credit. The service charge has always been separate. Guam's law clearly has it separated. Tips and wages are wages. It's not, it has never changed, both federal and local. So if you're ever been disillusioned or not wondering why or never read it, it's very clear, and it's never changed. So all I'm saying is, I understand, is, but the best thing to do, and I always ask this to every server where I eat, whether it's Guam, anywhere in the States, anywhere in Asia, because it is starting to change in Asia where there's automatic tip. But you should always ask the server, do you share in this tip? Is this service charge going to you? If I leave a tip with you, do you get it later? I always ask these questions because I know. And I encourage all of you to do the same.
And I didn't know, and that's why I'm bringing it up. And the reason why it's so important to me is because, you know, understanding our tourism market, right? There's no tip culture in a lot of our major tourism markets.
Correct.
And I was under the impression years ago, I forget where I learned this, that the reason why we have service charge on our bills is because to kind of help our employees get a 10% tip because the tip culture of the patrons that make up our tourism industry, you know, they don't tip.
Correct.
And so that 10% service charge was supposed to actually, you know, help them get a tip from a customer that just culturally is not inclined.
Right.
And so that, you know, all of these things were the operating assumptions that I was working under, and I just wanted to share that I was, I was very heartbroken, one, that there was an actual concerted effort to train employers to almost scalp those tips to offset the minimum wage. I mean, that really bothered me.
Yep.
And the second thing that just really bothered me was, you know, our industry is a service-oriented industry. Our, a lot of our lowest-wage workers are these servers. And, and the reason why I'm sharing this is because tonight, I'm all about striking a balance, okay? I'm concerned about too much of an increase in the minimum wage is going to hurt small businesses from being able to open up and operate. But I'm also equally concerned about us, you know, going too hardline the other way also and taking service charges away from employees because minimum wages went up, you know? And so I really think that we need to, as an island community, come to terms with the fact that the only way we're going to thrive is if we try to balance the need for us to not only help our local businesses to exist and to grow, but to help the employees that work in those businesses to earn a decent living. And, and I'm glad that we had this conversation tonight because I can assure you that, I'm not quite sure where this minimum wage bill is going to go, but I'm definitely going to be introducing a bill to reclassify service charges as tips because that's what they should be for the employees.
Well, they're separate. You can't, actually. You can talk to labor.
Well, if it's Guam law that's going to define that, this is where Guam law is made.
Well, it's federal law and Guam law.
And the employees, the employees who are getting service charges on their receipts should be entitled to the service charges as tips.
So here's an example.
And I'm just stating that, you know, for the record, Mr. Speaker.
I'm just going to explain service charge one more, one other way. Service charge is also used to cover, like I said, breakage. Every time employees who, you know, when there are things that break in the restaurant or lost shortage on, in the, in the check, I'm sorry, in closeouts when you're closing the cashier, it's also covered for training. It's also used to pay for employee parties and incentive parties and other positive things. It goes back to those departments. Service charge is not taken as profit. It is used and put in departmental because you need to have these types of things for those departments to really get them to be motivated. That is how...
I was really so heartbroken when the, when the server that was serving me came up to me so excited about the minimum wage one day, and then after it was implemented, came up so sad that their tips went down because their service charges got reduced by their employer, you know? And that's just, I mean...
But it's not the same thing.
I know it's not the same, but my whole point is that we should be operating under a good faith effort here to try and help improve people's lives, you know? That's really what this all boils down to. Let's keep our local businesses open and let's help them to thrive, but let's also help our employees to earn a decent wage, and that's, that's where all of this is coming from, really.
So I'm going to give you an example of what a restaurateur did recently. A restaurateur actually took away all service charge. What they decided to do was increase prices completely, just increase prices, and they took away service charge. But what they did was they also made sure that everybody in the entire business got the tip, not just the server. And so it was shared equitably across the board. And these are places that are dealing with the minimum wage increases. These are examples through National Restaurant Association and other types of organizations because they're trying to find ways to survive. They cannot keep dealing with these minimum wage increases, and just because you think a server only makes this, I'm telling you, servers make more, especially with tips, than any other person. What about all the other positions, you know, out there? They don't have those opportunities to make additional income, but servers do. And so it helps motivate the staff to provide better service if they get tipped. And service charge goes to part of that, and it goes to morale programs and training and other things. So it's meant to be there for other things, not just for wages. If it was there for wages, it would be called wages.
So in the interest, and you testified to this earlier about the need for us to do this study, and so in the interest of us getting a very clear picture on this study, could we also get full disclosure from the members, the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, through a study on how much of service charge per restaurant is actually going to the employee so we can get a clear understanding of how that's...
Are you willing to mandate the funding on that? Because we're nonprofit.
Of how that's going to impact, of how that service charge actually impacts the employees.
Well, that should be added to the survey.
That will all help us, you know, factor all those wage considerations into this question of the minimum wage.
You know, I would highly encourage that we, instead of a public hearing, have a roundtable discussion and really talk about the independent economic study and the, how we can, how we can design it and make sure all the economists are in there, all of the industry questions you want, some of the things that you wanted, like what chamber, what chairperson Laura Duck and I had mentioned about, you know, capital expenditures and inventory and, and all of those things, uniforms, you know? We need to be able to make sure our study is designed to be fully comprehensive, and I'm sorry to say, it's been paid twice, but $500,000 was spent on the HAY study. I think that Guam deserves better in making sure that we do our study if it's going to impact the entire island and increase taxes and wages and everything else and government spending, as we heard from Ms. Biletto, that we should spend, I'm not saying spend a half million dollars, but if we're going to do it right, let's do it right, and let's be comprehensive about it. If we're willing to spend $500,000 just for governed employees, I think the private sector industry deserves the same.
Oh, I would love for you guys to spend $500,000 to do a wage study on your industry.
No, I'm saying that you guys are mandating this, and you found the money for it. I think that we should work together on it, but you, if it's mandated by you, you need to be able to fund it. I don't know how many times we come here and there are so many unfunded mandates, and then these government agencies are left holding their hands up because they don't know what to do. They can't meet it. So I think that we need to really just reassess the situation and know that the IES is really a requirement before we proceed any further.
I think that's a great segue to getting Ms. Biletto back to the table.
I'm trying to avoid that side of the table because it's usually cold, but...
As the Director of Administration, the Director of the General Services Administration, what is the status of the study?
I have not checked on the status of the study.
There's a letter from the Deputy Director of Department of Labor that says that the RFP was released on April 1, 2016, and responses are under review, and they're working with GITA to find the...
Yeah, it's, it's the department that's charged with conducting this study or responsible for whatever, right, labor. In procurement, you know, we as Department of Administration don't look at all the different procurements going through, so labor would be responsible.
So who certified the RFP on that?
I'm assuming the Deputy Director. I believe that was what was published in the newspaper.
Because both, both you and the governor and I'll just, I understand that everybody else has testified about the need for the study, but for yourself and the governor to both say that we need to fund this mandate, I want to know who signed the RFP.
I'm sure that we can check into that and get you the information.
And I know that at one prior hearing, you didn't know what an RFP was and the process, but a, there needs to be certification of funds available to sign and issue an RFP. So that's why I'm trying to figure out what were the funds and who certified that there were some funds available for this study, and why are you and the governor both now saying that there's need for fund, for us to appropriate money for it?
I know that initially, they were trying to work through GITA, who applied for some federal funding, so I don't know what happened to the status of that. And like I said, I can check for you and have them give you the information, but I know that that funding is not available today. So maybe they had promises or assertions that didn't come through. I don't know, but I can check.
So how could an RFP be signed with certified funds available? And who signed it, if you can provide that?
Well, let me, Mr. Vice Speaker, let me be more clear in sharing this information with you. with you and with the members of the public. The Deputy Director of Labor writes, "The department had been working with GITA to identify the resources needed to complete a study to produce an independent economic impact statement. This required the issuance of a request proposal to conduct an impact study." So I guess what Dr. Mabini's saying is that they found the money through GITA, and that the RFP was issued based on GITA identifying those resources. But I will get those documents from you.
I, I understand, but she's saying that we need to fund it, and the Governor is saying that we need to fund it, and, and somebody has signed an RFP certifying that funds were available, which is illegal to do unless there is funds. So there's been funds. And for both of you, not necessarily you, Ms. Rhodes, but Ms. Boletto, on the issue of trying to find GITA and trying to find funds, are you aware of any statute that mandates Imagine Guam?
I'm not aware of most of the statutes. I'm still learning. It was GBB's?
GBB, the airport, and, and GITA somehow found money to do Imagine Guam. There was no legislative mandate for that. There's been three big meetings at Dusitani. And I'm trying to figure out how, who found the money, and how is it that it's possible to find money to do that, and not any money to, to, to do this study?
Well, I don't, I don't know the background behind Imagine Guam, but with respect to the administration, we're not trying to increase the minimum wage, and it wasn't mandated for us, or the, the funding wasn't provided to us to be able to do this. So, you know, I know the funding is not available today.
And so I'm, again, in spite of Dr. Mabini's statement that they issued the RFP-
Right.
-in order to be able to issue an RFP again, just for your edification, it requires that somebody certifies that funds are available.
And like I said, I can check with them and find out what happened in that situation, but I'm not aware of any funds being available today.
Okay. Before you came to Department of Administration, you were at the port, is that correct? As, as the member of the board?
I actually had been gone from the board for over a year. So it was, I think December 2014 was my last time there.
And Mr. Sung and Senator Orsini both testified about the increases of the, the goods that they're, they're having to, for their businesses, that the eggs went up 120%. You were a member of the board at the, the port, when the port was trying to resolve the issue of YTK, weren't you not?
No. No, I wasn't on the board at that time.
Um, if I were to-
For YTK?
Yes, YTK. Were you on the board in 12, in, in 2012?
Oh, you're talking about the, the, what is it called, the-
Hotel Warf.
Yeah, Hotel Warf, yes.
You were a member of the board?
Yes. Well, I, I came in, I guess, when they were trying to settle.
And so you were aware of the settlements that were being offered at the time?
I'm not sure what that has to do with minimum wage increase, but-
No, I'm just trying, no, I mean, there's no need to get cute. You're just, I'm just trying to address the issue of the inflationary cost of goods.
Okay.
Okay? You're aware that within the last month, the settlement, I mean, the, the arbitration panel issued a order that says that the, that the port's going to have to pay $14 million.
I did see that in the newspaper.
And as a former board member, for the port to be able to pay that, do they have the funds to be able to do so? And if they're able to do so, will it mean that we're going to have to increase the cost to each container that comes off a boat? And how much is that going to inflate his eggs or Sunny's beef?
Well, I'm sure if you ask the port to run the numbers, they'll be able to provide it to you.
But, but you, you understand that in order to pay a $14 million judgment, it's going to be a substantial fee increase, right?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and so the inflation of that is going to be more than this bill. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, when are we, when are we going to address that issue of how we're going to, to, to make that payment, and who's responsible for that?
The payment of the Y2K?
Yeah.
Or YTK?
I'm just trying to, the, all the costs that's going on, the inflation.
I, I don't know with the port, you know, what their plans are. I haven't been on the board, like I said, for a couple of years now. They're going to have to figure out, and you're going to have to ask their chair, you know, how they're going to, to afford that. But any increases to the cost, whether it be to the government or the private sector, obviously is going to have a ripple effect. So that's kind of the issue today, is that this has the potential effect to, you know, not only on the private sector, but again, on the government sector with our current wage scale. If we raise the minimum wage, we are going to have to address those employees that are close to those, or with the minimum wage increase, those minimum wage earners are going to exceed our current, some of our current page, wage earners. And so we might need to assess the entire pay scale for the government of Guam, and what will that mean in terms of cost? Obviously, the, the folks that have worked two or three years and have earned those increases or their step increases are not going to be appreciative of, of the lower positions making more than them. So I mean, that's, that's kind of my concern, is the increase to the government for personnel costs.
Over the last month and a half, what, what efforts have you made to assist the Department of Labor in trying to get this study completed?
I have not assisted Department of Labor in trying to get, I mean, I don't personally get involved with the different agencies, and as far as accomplishing what they need to do for their department. Again, my, my role here is the cost, the cost to the government for personnel.
And in order to get the cost, we needed to have the study. I'm, I'm asking-
Correct.
What did you do to assist Department of Labor to try to get this study done in a timely fashion?
Well, I just came in in February, so I have been asking them about the funding. That's when they identified that they were working with GITA to try to secure some federal funding. I don't know what's happened since that time to, to today, but, you know, I can certainly find out for you.
And you're still insistent that until that study is done, nothing should be done by this legislature?
I agree.
And if the study is never done, then we can never increase the minimum wage?
Well, I'm sure, I, I've seen a lot of bills come through in the last couple of months for appropriations. Not that I've supported anything that spends more money, but, you know, this legislature can appropriate money, you know, in the next session to, to be able to afford the study.
But the study is already, the, the RFP's already out, so there's no need for a study, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, if there was something that happened between the time they were advised that funding was available, and they lost that, let's say it is grant funding, you know, again, I don't know the details, but if that funding is not currently available today, then it cannot be done.
So are you aware of whether or not there is or is not funding, or has the RFP been withdrawn?
That's what I said I need to check into and get back to you.
Well, if the RFP was issued, then that means that someone certified that funding is available.
Correct.
So we'll determine, we'll make that determination.
What happened? Why is it not available?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nine o'clock.
But more, more to the Vice Speaker's point, that if an RFP was issued, that they, someone certified that funding was there to commission that study.
Right.
So it's possible that the money has been identified through GITA, and that they've commissioned the study. It's possible.
I, I can check.
Now, if they issued an RFP without any funding, then that's, that invites more questions than we have answers at this point.
Okay.
Okay. There's no other comments or questions for this panel? I also thank the two of you for your participation, and particularly the conversation on how tip credits cannot be used to supplement the, the minimum wage, the statutory wage, but it seems like the service charge is being used to supplement those kinds of operational expenses, which includes the, alleviating the cost of the minimum wage increase. So the service charge-
But it's to supplement the wage.
I know, but it could be, okay. See, I'm still-
It's not to supplement the wages, they're getting paid the wages.
They're wages, but the tip, the, the tip has now been categorized as a service charge.
No, 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 no.
No, but I don't mean to hold any of you back any further.
For the record, wages and tips are the same.
Are separate.
No.
No, are separate than service charge. Yes.
Yes, but wages and tips are together as part of their declared income and owed to the employee.
If a restaurant has a 10% service charge, so, and the employee necessarily doesn't get that service charge because that goes into the-
There's no, right. It depends on the, the service charge is discretionary to the employer, and there are different rules on how to, you know, there's different policies and procedures on how they administer that. The thing that is clear is tips and wages need to be payable to the employee.
But what if prior to the minimum, the last minimum wage increase, what if the service charge was given to the employee as a tip? And after the minimum wage increase, that service charge is no longer given to the employee as a tip, but it's now-
But it can't be considered as part of their wages.
But I'm saying, what if prior to the minimum wage increase, the employee, as Senator Snikless also pointed out, the employee is getting that service charge?
Right. Oh, it did happen.
And, well, that's my-
They, they removed the service charge. There are some businesses that remove service charge.
No, no, not remove the service charge, there's some businesses that were giving the service charge as a tip.
Right. Right. But it did not replace their wages.
I understand.
It just made, they just made that discretion to cover operational costs.
Exactly.
Yes.
So I said, it's possible that was, that what was once a service charge is now being classified as a, what was once a tip, I'm sorry, is now being classified as a service charge?
No. Wages and tips-
I know.
No, but you can't combine the two. They are separate. A 10% service charge is always a service charge. That was always at the discretion of the employer. If the employees participated in that program, that was because the employer wanted to encourage that and provide that to the employee. But it's nowhere, nowhere should be understood as part of wages or tips.
But prior to the minimum wage going up, there was a tip credit?
Not always. No.
No, there was a tip credit that allowed the-
But tip credit is tip, not service charge.
Okay.
It's separate. You have to think of wages and tips only as one. So I would recommend that we actually, before we have a roundtable with other restaurants, we should probably, I would invite you guys to all have a roundtable. I would attend, maybe Chamber, and we would sit with Department of Labor, both federal and local, side with Roman and Patrick, so we could clearly outline this, and so you guys can hear it from the agency that's, agencies that are responsible for enforcement and also clarification on these things. I have met with them just to better understand it and just to better educate our members. But the challenge is, GHRA, again, is a member organization. It's not a requirement by the government to join that. And there are a lot, majority of the restaurants on Guam are not members of GHRA, unbeknownst to most people. It's a myth, right? We have majority, majority of our members actually are allied members. So private sector companies who don't provide, who provide services to the tourism, to the hotels and restaurants and retail. So I would encourage that we meet with Patrick and with Roman, so everybody is, has clarity on the issues, and that we don't just, you know, misunderstand the intent of this, and we should try to fix that, and make sure everybody is better educated. I have met, again, with Senator Ada's staff on working with Department of Labor to better educate the restaurants, and all service industry companies who add service charge to better explain that. And they even wanted to make sure that there are signs, because a lot of restaurants do have signs of where, what service charge is, because they've had to educate people. So Senator Ada's office was working with me.
And so as a public service announcement, waitstaff, they have to get their minimum wage plus all of their tips, however the employer divides those tips.
Yeah, you have to be careful, because it's not just waitstaff.
I'm just saying, whoever's eligible for those tips, it could be-
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. So, correct. It is minimum wage plus tips. So I would rather defer to Department of Labor's, both federal, Guam Department of Labor and the Federal Wage in Hour Division, to meet with us, so that we can better understand and have clarity, and then work with them on coming up with some of the talking points that we should share with the community. But that should be better understood and better explained. I'm only explaining it from my perspective, from what GHRA understands and has been educated on, but I think it's better that we get it from the correct agencies who have that authority, especially when we're dealing with, you know, you guys. I would rather have it come from the agencies. I have no direct authority or enforcement to go out and check people. I know people have done it on an independent study, and there are variations of it, but you can't really go out and define, it's already defined for us, and so they have to stay within those parameters.
And so do you have anything else to add?
Always. Please do not move forward without an independent economic study, and please fund it appropriately.
Okay, so-
And, and include us in the design of it, so it's all inclusive and comprehensive.
And before I close, the Vice Speaker opened up, that when he originally introduced the bill, it called for $1.95 increases for three consecutive years, and the outcome was a dollar increase one time, and that proposal was supported not only by the Chamber, but also by GHRA. That one-
I think I still spoke against it, but we understand it was a compromise.
But listen, as, but so you can, on one hand, support it, and now that-
No, no, my letter still opposed it.
And say that it had made all these, you know, ill effects, and so for the record, it was-
It was a compromise.
But, but you still supported it. If you didn't support it, it probably wouldn't have gone through, but, but it was supported.
I, well, just so you know, I didn't speak for it.
What, what, what-
I didn't speak for it.
What was, what could have gone through was 10-10.
I understand, but-
All the way up to $10 and $10 to $10 an hour or so.
On the record, GHRA opposed that bill, and on the record, we did not speak against it because we had a compromise.
The original bill to bring it up to 10-10.
No. If you ever notice, I don't come to the hearings when we don't support or we're against it. If we come to a compromise, I actually just respect the, the fact that we've agreed.
So-
But I didn't actually support it publicly with a letter or with an oral testimony.
Okay.
But it was a compromise.
Okay, but then that compromise was supported, right? Why exactly? Yeah. No, exactly.
Actually, I think our support was with the economic impact study, just so, or independent economic impact study, just so you know. It was with that caveat.
And that was, that was addressed in a separate legislation? Yes.
I understand, because you can't really force them.
Yes, we are in agreement, and having, understand that we are-
It should have been in the same.
Okay. But nonetheless, it's both statute. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your participation.